Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to this regular scheduled board meeting on March 21st at 7:10. Sorry about being a little late. We'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Rickus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes. And now Suni, with the approval of the agenda.
I move that the Board of Education approve an amended agenda for tonight's board meeting to have the Evanston Community Schools Initiative as the first discussion item.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rickus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci? Yes, motion passes. Our formal presentations from the public will begin, and we have Lisa Lauth. Yes. And we keep our remarks to three minutes, so state your name. And we also, it's our policy not to state any name, anyone by name in your remarks. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank the Board so much for giving me an opportunity to represent a group of parents who wanted to make sure that we verbally, as well as in writing, clearly stated our commitment and support to our new principal at Bessie Rhodes. Can I say her name?
Yes.
We are excited about Mrs. Norwood being here. And one of the main reasons is, my dear friend who cannot be here tonight, her daughter started at Bessie Rhodes in first grade. She will be graduating this year as an eighth grader. And I wrote these names down so I wouldn't forget. They're principal names. Can I mention that? The principal names.
Past principals?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, I think we're supposed to...
Oh, sorry.
We defer to our expert here. No, I'm sorry. You'll have to keep it to general comments, is that right?
In total, she has had six principals since she's been a student at Bessie Rhodes. And so that is what a number of us parents are concerned about. I haven't been a part of the six principals. I have been a part of three. Mrs. Hillard, Mrs. Johnson, who I was very excited to see because I went to grade school with her children. The only problem was, next to her name was the word "inner." So the reason that I'm excited to see Ms. Norwood's name is because it says "permanent." And I think our children deserve stability. I was previously a part of the Dewey community. We also went through a change and received a new president, excuse me, a new principal. Now, change is scary to many. And it can either cause you to run or do what we did at Dewey, which was rally behind the principal, the staff, and the parents. And Dewey is better today because of it. Now, the group of parents that I represent may not be the most vocal, but we are just as committed. My schedule will not allow me to attend PTA meetings on a regular basis, but when needed, I will be present. And I will be here to speak on behalf of my children and the children of so many other parents who are unable to be here. So I really want to encourage the Bessie Rhodes community to get behind our principal and let the Evanston community see that we are not fearful of change, but we can work with leadership so that my children don't have to go through six more principles before we get it right. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you. Next is Karen Barber.
Hi there. Good evening. It's basically a long way. Good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Karen Barber. I'm a bilingual reading specialist at Oakton School. I'm a trained reading recovery and discovering the la le tura teacher, and I also teach small groups of students first through fifth grade at Oakton School who are struggling with literacy development. I speak for myself and for other reading specialists in the district, many of whom were present here this evening, and many others who couldn't make it this evening. I'm here tonight to thank Stacy Beardsley and her team for their work on the new District 65 K-3 literacy framework. The process for this framework development began last year under the direction of Dimitri Disatar in a summer curriculum group. The guiding principles and beliefs about teaching and learning K-3 literacy that were crafted with that initial group have remained intact in the current version of the framework. Since that time, Dr. Beardsley has conducted many small focus groups with different groups of teachers and invited reading specialists for input on several occasions. She also consulted with our district literacy experts, literacy coaches, and our reading recovery teacher leader. Each focus group and conversation has led to revisions and additions that have enhanced the framework. We have felt listened to by Dr. Beardsley and included in the process, and have high hopes that we will continue to be a part of the crafting implementation of the framework as it goes forward. In terms of this final draft of the literacy framework, as reading specialists, we feel confident that this framework is a reflection of the theory of a well-supported, balanced literacy instructional framework. We appreciate the emphasis on teaching students through the use of authentic text in ways where meaning and comprehension are focal from the very beginning. We appreciate the direct and reciprocal connections between reading, writing, and speaking. We fully support the need for a balance between whole group, small group, and one-on-one instruction that focuses on authentic reading and writing activities. We believe that the framework creates a seamless support for phonemic awareness and phonics through authentic reading, writing, and language opportunities. In summary, we are very pleased with the process surrounding the framework development, as well as the robust content of the curriculum. We believe that District 65 students will thrive with the much-needed and well-defined literacy framework that embraces a complex theory of reading and writing acquisition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next is Jude Lauth.
Thank you to the Board for allowing me this time to speak and express our perspective. I am also a parent at Bessie Rhodes High School, I mean, Bessie Rhodes School. I'm a native of Evanston. I was raising my family for, my wife and I candidly raised our family for 13 years before we decided to come back to the Evanston community. It became a dream of ours, and we were thankful that four years ago, we were able to make that dream a reality. I have four children in the school system here at Evanston. All four of them, at one point, were all at Bessie Rhodes. I have two in high school, and I want to start from a freshman, so I have two remaining children at Bessie Rhodes, one a sixth grader and one a fifth grader. During the four-year period that we and my children have attended Bessie Rhodes, there have been three principals, and I believe two of them were interim. I too am concerned about what I call the lack of administrative continuity. I feel that when there is no continuity with the stakeholders of an institution, whether it be administrators, parents, staff, there is a negative impact on the school as it relates to its goals. What I am seeing is that when you have administration and school leadership that is consistently changing, it impacts the curriculum goals, it impacts the school culture and how that unfolds, culture and discipline. You see, every time you have either a new administrator that comes in or a new faculty member, they have to adapt and learn either the culture of the school and get a good understanding of the culture of the school, and also get a good understanding of what the mission is of that school. If you don't have that continuity, you're constantly in a relearning phase, and that is not good for any institution. I feel strongly that when someone, and this is what we would want for our children, when anyone is not performing up to the level of expectations that are placed on that particular position, I don't believe that you get rid of someone. I think rather that you should identify the problem areas, develop, identify best practices to try to improve whatever problem areas there are, and then consistently go back to see where you are along the line of being the type of school that you want to be. And I see my time is up, so that's my main point. Institutional continuity, which includes administration, staff, and parents, it makes for better schools.
Thanks so much. Now, we're on to the presentation of the library innovations, enhancements, and initiatives.
All of you like the interviews? Or we just...okay.
Thank you so much for letting us come tonight to share with you some of the very exciting things that are happening in the library department for Evanston's Gokee District 65. The slideshow that we're showing tonight is just a loop, so everybody kind of gets a little sense of all the exciting things that the kids are doing throughout the school district, and it'll just play over and over as we go. So I'm Amy O'Dworka. I'm a librarian at Haven Middle School.
And I'm Becky Barre. I am the librarian at Dewey Elementary School. So everyone in here probably knows, we're extremely busy, and we just want to give you a few fun facts. We service over 5,500 students a week in classes and in additional activities. We circulate 170,000 items per school year, and we manage a collection of over 169,000 volumes. And in addition, we collaborate with and we support dozens of staff members each and every week.
But tonight, our focus truly is on the enhancement programs that we are conducting every day in our school district for our children, and some of the new innovative uses of programming time that we're using in the library. So tonight, Becky and I are each going to tell you a little story about activities that we're doing that have been extremely successful, and we feel a little bit on the cutting edge. And then we'd like to just tell you a little bit more about some items that are going on around the district with the rest of the people that we work with.
So as we're talking, you're going to hear us talking about Maker as we're presenting. You're going to hear us repeating Maker and Makerspace. And just to fill you in, if you're not aware of what that is, Makerspace is a do-it-yourself space where students gather to create, invent, and learn. And in the District 65 librarians, you, or in the District 65 libraries, you might see that in one library, students coding, working on a program like Scratch, where students are creating code, are using code to create a computer program. You might see robotics in one of the libraries, where someone is using a Spiro to measure perimeter of a rectangle. Electronics and circuitry happen a lot in the library as well, with different kinds of tools, like Snap Circuits and Littlebits. And then media and audio visual, you might see that happening in the library. You might see a stop motion animation film being created. Or you might see architecture and construction. And that's, I'm going to talk to you about, what I'm working on with my Dewey students. So at Dewey Elementary School, a 3D printer was donated to Dewey Elementary School last year, and I decided to bring it up into the library and see what I could do with it. And I went to the Districts, I went to Evanston Public Librarians for a little bit of help because I know that they had been working with 3D printers, and I knew that they... I knew that they could help me out with learning the program to teach students how to use this 3D printer. So the Evanston Public Librarians came in during one of my Friday flexible scheduled days, and they worked with me to learn a program and then to kind of teach me how to teach the students. The 3D CAD program is called TinkerCad. Prior to that, I'd never used a CAD program in my life, I had no idea. So they came in and really trained me, and then I was able to present that to the students. The students worked on an open-ended design project where they decided what they wanted to make. I gave them some size parameters, and they created 3D designs, and they printed 3D designs, and it was really fantastic. We had anything from houses to chickens to keychains that the students had created, all on their own, within a 1.5 cubic inch parameter. Because 3D printing takes a long time. In addition to this, during my Friday flex day, I was also able to bring in a Dewey parent who has made his profession in the 3D printing industry. He presented to all of the fifth graders and talked to them about the real-life applications of 3D printing and how that can be, you know, a profession for them in the future. So the students were really excited about this. A lot of them commented on how the project was open-ended, they were able to create their own designs. They also commented on how, at times when they found that things didn't work, they had to modify for success. So they talked about the success and failure, which goes along with a lot of STEM-type activities. The next step for Dewey students is going to be a design challenge, and that's something else that you might see happening in District 65 libraries, a lot of design challenges happening that go along with that STEM-based curriculum. And students will be looking for a need of Dewey that they hopefully can satisfy with a 3D-printed project. And Amy's going to tell you about what's happening here.
So at Haven, I felt like our lunchtime programming needed a little reboot. So we sat down with the kids, and we put together a committee of students who came up with a Survey Monkey. And we surveyed the entire student body to come up with new programming and concepts that the kids were interested in doing during their lunchtime. And to try and get middle school kids to not go outside and play basketball, or to not want to go and just sit and talk, and come and actually do something that gets them thinking, that's creative and different and new, is a little bit of a challenge. But we do feel like we've been extremely successful this year with our new activity days. That's right, that's what 13-year-olds come up with when you ask them to name a program. So this year, on a monthly basis, we have two coordinating activity days that happen, and throughout those days, we have different types of programs. Some of them are Maker implementations, and kids get to learn how to construct things, they get to work with Littlebits, they get challenges that they can work with a teammate or they can work on their own with. And when they come in, they actually have the opportunity to pick anything that they want. We'll have three or four different activities going on at the exact same time. And so we're able to service anywhere from 20 to 30 students per lunch period, which is quite a few kids when you've got multiple different kinds of activities going on. And then some of our programming is actually very traditional to a library. We still have book clubs going on. We just got finished with March Madness Book Challenge that involved Nerf basketballs flying all over my library after you answered questions about your books. But the one thing that I'll say is that my programming numbers are through the roof. I've gone from 88 students over the course of all last year up to 310, and we still have another month of programming to go. So I'm thrilled with the results that we've seen, and I think the kids are really, really excited. But the Maker challenges, it's been a really terrific way for me to be able to kind of dive into this in what I consider a safe environment for myself as an educator, trying to kind of figure it out. We've been able to work with small groups. I've been able to collaborate with Evanston Public Library. They've come in and done a little bit of training for me, they've done a little bit of training for the kids. And it's been a really, really wonderful experience and a great way for the kids to kind of do something new that they haven't necessarily had the experience with. And it's been a way for them to actually get their hands on some of these things they've been hearing about from other places. I was very fortunate that I was able to fund all of this through a donor's choose at the beginning of the school year. So I was able to take my entire lunchtime programming, and I received a $650 grant to pay for all of it. So, you know, it's not a small chunk of change when you're looking at these kinds of things. It's been very exciting, and these are the kinds of programs that we're seeing happen all over the school district through the libraries, not just at Haven and not just at Dewey. You know, we've seen all sorts of fundraising programming going on around the school district and the libraries. The libraries raise over $33,000 a year for their own collection development and for their own programming throughout the course of all of the schools. And without that money, a lot of these programs actually wouldn't happen. So we're very grateful to the families who help us with our fundraising efforts in all of the, in all the schools and all the buildings. You're also seeing that all of the schools are doing all sorts of Maker projects and programs. Do you want to say a little bit about what other schools do here?
Also in front of me, sorry. I know robotics is happening at Dawes, correct? Mindy's working with robotics, with Spiro Robotics. Tricia, who is here...
Working with circuitry, the Littlebits. And Makey Makeys.
And Makey Makeys. Where's that at?
At Washington. I know at Willard where it's a big, big, big one as well. And Tricia is...
And some of us look at it as well. I mean, when I do this type of thing, I'm using a small group model where kids are in different groups doing different activities. So there might be a Makey Makey station, there'd be a Littlebits station, there might be an Instructables station, which is an online site where there's thousands of activities. And I might say, you know, do this activity about making a bookmark. You've got to read all the instructions, figure it out, and make the bookmark, you know, it's a little dumb type of thing. And then I might pull up drawing books, and they have to use a drawing book to warn where you're wrong, rather than just, you know, I'm just going to draw what I want, but actually read instructions and, you know, get the literacy connection with that too, as they do when they use Littlebits and that sort of thing.
Rhodes, right now, we're doing an Out of the Swirl program. So I have a small group that is making Mars Rover using Littlebits and then just boxes and pieces of scratch that you would put together. And then I'm going to learn about 3D printing along with them because part of the challenge is that this is all new, this is all different, and we're almost modeling the fact that we're all learners.
At Oakton, our teacher and I, Mrs. Hernandez, we did a STEAM club before school, and we were just overwhelmed with the number of kids that wanted to join, so we're doing another session, I think, after spring break. But we did everything from jewelry making to design their own websites, scratch. Oakton did the Hour Code, the National Library Program in December. So it's, and I think because I implemented the STEM survey for the district, I got $100 on Amazon, so I ordered some Littlebits or something.
So there are a lot of, a lot of extracurricular-type activities that are happening for school and after school, during lunch and recess, a lot of clubs that are being created throughout the district as we continue to learn more about the Maker and Makerspace movement.
But we also wanted to remind you that we still are doing a lot of additional things that you expect in the libraries. And the amount of author visits that are happening in this school district are beyond a little crazy. On average, we have anywhere from between 12 to 15 live authors in the schools every year. And most of that is not actually even anything we have to fund. It's through the relationships that we've created around the area and with different booksellers, with the publishers, that we're able to bring those authors in so that students see what it's like to see that profession and hear from those people, and that their writing can also go in. Possibly, maybe they'll become a writer, and that they would like to do that as a profession. And we're very, very lucky to be able to have these kinds of programs for the kids. And then the last thing that's still going on that's very traditional is the good old book club. And boy, are those things alive and well and kicking. Many of the elementary schools are still doing multiple book clubs throughout the course of the school year. They do those before, during, after school. Many of them have, around the theme of many of the awards that happen through ALA or through different Illinois State Awards, and many of them are just interest book clubs. And we're seeing the numbers just, you know, they're exploding with kids that are interested in reading about different kinds of literature and talking about different kinds of literature. And we're still very excited to still be reading with kids and encouraging them to experience new kinds of literature.
So with that, the theme of this year's National Library Week, which is coming up in April, is Libraries Transform. And we hope that the District 65 libraries are not only transforming themselves, but also our students. Our students learning on a daily basis through our innovative new programming. So we hope that you can see that. And as the slides go by, you'll see a lot of students involved in that transformation that's occurring in our libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. You want to stay up for a second in case we have any questions?
Oh, sure.
Okay. Jennifer?
It's a question slash comment, I think, and it's, so last Monday, we got to hear Pedro Noguera from an NYU talk, and one of the things that stuck for me was a comment that he made about that learner-centered, you know, like highly interactive classrooms are the best form of classroom management. And so, you know, that's something that just resonates, and I'm guessing if you asked any of your kids, like if you surveyed the kids about how much they love this, you'd probably get really high response rates. So the question is, if you guys are the pioneers on this, and it's a good way to go, how does the district actually support that transformation so that you're not cobbling together, you know, personal pieces, donor choose, those kinds? I think it's a big question for the district about how, how we support that type of learning and that type of transformation in libraries. So kudos to all of you. I just, it's amazing to see what you're doing, so thanks.
You know, I think one thing that we talk about as a department a lot is just the PD time that we need to be able to learn about this. And being able to attend conferences like ICE in the spring is always tremendously helpful, I think, to all of us. And we're always very grateful when we have the opportunity to be able to attend those things. So I think any sort of PD that we can get ourselves involved in is usually extremely helpful for us.
Stacy has been great this year in that, you know, we did go to ICE, which is a first in a long time that Evanston has been represented. I think everybody in the administration has been always very open to our ideas, and our principals have been big supporters of that. It is a time. So where Amy has an assistant, the middle schools have an assistant, that's very helpful. Where we have flex days, librarians have a little bit more planning time, although we call it flex time because our goal is to be working with students and teachers during that time. So that's very important to us. But it's really exciting to see just your point about kids that are not engaged. So my after-school program, I had a fourth grade student who's told me most of the year not interested in anything. And he actually walked in, saw what the other kids are doing, and said, can I join? You know, I mean, he came after school to participate in something because he wanted to do it.
Any other questions?
I've just had one. Media arts, seems like there's an overlap there as far as one of the rotations in the middle schools. And so, is there, do you think? Or do you see what you're doing is very, very different?
I think, I think at middle school, what I'm, what I'm doing, I consider extremely different from what they're doing in the media arts class rotation. I just think mine's a little more open-ended and a little more exploratory, where I feel like media arts is maybe have, is a little more curriculum-driven, so I just consider it a little different.
Okay. Okay, thanks so much. It has been so interesting to watch. Board and District Communications.
And let me also offer my thanks, a really wonderful presentation. I have a few quick announcements. I want to give a shout-out, and Candace, do you want to join me on this, to the Haven Science Olympiad team for a terrific showing this past weekend at the Illinois Science Olympiad Regional Tournament that happened at Oakton Community College. We're still awaiting final results, but the team pulled away, earning four top honors in nearly half the events, tallying over 20 medals, and receiving the Spirit Award. Team has grown substantially over the last three years and is a testament to the enthusiasm of science teacher and team coach, Mr. Darrell Pyramin. So I want to give congratulations to Mr. Pyramin and the whole science team. Candace, do you want to join in since we talked about this?
Well, since I was there for 16 hours. I just wanted to say, this is the first year that Haven has fielded both a JV and a varsity team of science Olympiad, 38 kids. And I think three years ago, there was eight kids on the team, so, you know, the trial by error, the experience by doing, there's 23 different events, and it's all a process of learning by... and it's all a process of learning by making mistakes is really what it is. It, it was just amazing to see our kids out there. And then to see the ETHS team, which has also grown exponentially. Many of our Haven students have moved on now to the ETHS team, and they had quite a good showing this year as well. So I think it's a, it's a testament to the excitement around these topics and around STEM and all facets of it. You would never see the bright, like glowing light bulbs in these kids' eyes. It was, it was really, it was a lovely thing. And, and Mr. Perriman was very adamant that he was not going to cut kids off the team. I mean, he, one person supporting 38 kids to coach a team like this, many of the other school districts have coaches for each of the 23 events. And so, we, we owe a debt of gratitude to him and to the other teachers that gave their space, their room space and everything to, to make it possible that all of those 38 kids could have this experience. So.
Thank you. Let me also recognize the debate team members from Bessie Rhodes, King Arts, and Nichols for a job well done last weekend at the Chicago, City Championship of the Chicago Middle School Debate League. The event hosted 128 teams from 23 schools. In District 65, we had students from these three schools that took a combined four top 10 speaker awards and had six different teams compete in championship rounds in JV and varsity. We're very proud of the participants and also just equally proud of the teachers and the parents who spent a lot of time working there. Over the last couple of weeks, I've had my wonderful thrill of theater, not in New York City, or not in downtown Chicago, but right here in Evanston. I got to see opening night of Shrek the Musical at SHOOT, and I want to tip my hat to McCollum, who's in the back, to all of the colleagues at SHOOT who did a spectacular job. And then I got the extra special opportunity to see The Lion King premiere and opening night, closing night, closing afternoon with the secondary Zola King on Friday. And if they have a video, you have to get it. It was so spectacular to watch 60 kids in costume onstage doing just wonderful work. Again, fantastic coordination from our teachers, from our parents, costume makers. I do want to tip my hat to Matthew Hunter, who has been leading the music at both SHOOT and at King, and really, along with his other colleagues on staff, did such a fantastic job. Two quick things, just as upcoming events. Tomorrow night is the final session of the PTA Council Navigating Diversity Series. This event will be focused on practical tips for ally development, and it will take place at 6:30 tomorrow evening at ETHS. The session will provide practical tips and skill-building exercise to help guide our kids to become effective allies for one and another. And then I want to also stress that next month, we will be holding a special board meeting focused on the achievement of our African-American and Black students here in District 65. The meeting will be held here, Monday, April 25th, at 7:00 PM in the boardroom. In January, we published a preliminary report on Black student achievement focused on questions raised by the NAACP, community partners, and families. On, on April 25th, we will take the time to look at what the data are telling us, what we are currently doing to address achievement and opportunity gaps, and to discuss opportunities to further partner with our community to ensure that we're making a difference in the lives of every child in District 65. So I encourage you to come and participate in this very special board meeting, Monday, April 25th, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. I have one other announcement, and that is that the Nichols Middle School math team qualified for and competed in the state math counts competition on Saturday. And our own Ronan Sony finished fourth in the state. Is going on to the national competition. He'll be one of four Illinois students to compete at the national level. And I want to shout out to James Tuner-Lacroix, who has been faithfully guiding the math team for the last five, at least five years at Nichols, and is a fantastic parent volunteer. Anything else? Okay. Onto our consent agenda.
I move that the Board of Education accept the recommendations outlined in the attached group motion and approve the personnel appointments, leaves of absence, retirements, separations, and reduction in force. February 2016 Board of Education and Finance Committee meeting minutes. Destruction of the January 2014 closed session audio recordings. January 2016 list of bills, school treasurer's report, and budget amendments. Gift acceptance for Bessie Rhodes, SHOOT, and Willard. FY17 transportation fees, vehicle replacements, and FY17 building use fees.
Second?
So if we have a question on this, we just vote no, or do we ask a question now? Or does it have to get pulled off the consent agenda?
If we, if we want to separate it out to vote separately on it, but if you just want a clarifying question, that's fine.
Okay. Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, if someone can just second.
Seconded, yeah.
Second.
Okay. So, Dr. Brown, the vehicle replacement memo, back in the finance committee meeting, we had asked a question about how large the fleet was.
Yes.
But the memo also doesn't say anything, so one of the questions at finance was, can you get away with not purchase, you know, how many vehicles are in the fleet? Can you get away with not making that purchase? And my question is, how old is the rest of the fleet, right? Can you, can you really not get away with not purchasing those vehicles if you've got 13 in the, you know, fleet now?
Sure. Our fleet consists of a variety of vans and pickup trucks, and we have a minivan as well. These pickup trucks that we're recommending for replacement are in dire need of being replaced. They are used to transport people and equipment off to buildings as repairs and replacements are being made. They're used very heavily during plow season. These vehicles are 12 years old, the two pickup trucks recommended for replacement. We cannot live without replacing them. We are looking at a $7,000 estimate just to replace the bed in the back of these trucks.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, we already talked about not, you know, it doesn't make financial sense to do any maintenance on them. What I'm saying is, can you get away with not, like, do you not have any pickup trucks if you don't purchase these two pickup trucks?
We, we would, we would not have enough trucks to do our plowing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Rose Hall, please.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Carca?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. And now for the bond sale. Claudia?
I move that the Board of Education adopt a resolution providing for the issue of an estimated, of an estimate of $3,649,398 aggregate original principal amount, general obligation, limited tax, school capital appreciation bonds. Series 2016 of Community Consolidated School District Number 65, Cook County, Illinois, and for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal of and interest on said bonds.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Sure. I wanted to let the board know, the final sale did go through, and I did place at each of your locations what the final numbers were. So we now have final numbers. What was included in the resolution that was nicely read were estimates. I, we do have our bond counsel here, Darryl Davidson, and our bond representative from Spear Financial. The sale came in actually better than estimated on the interest rate, about 10 points better than expected. And the market was good and very competitive, and so we're very thrilled with this sale.
Any questions?
I have a question.
No, go ahead.
Well, I guess you, so what is the interest rate?
4.48 is the overall interest rate.
And we expected it to be 14?
No, no, I'm sorry. We expected, no, we, we expected it to be about 4, 4.6.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, yeah.
10 basis points.
10 basis points, sorry. 10 basis points. I'm sorry if I misspoke.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yes.
I think the other question I just had is, it kind of relates to the next.
Sure.
Agenda item is the intersection of this year's bond issuance and then the recommendation to not use all of those funds to conserve. So prior to voting for the bond issuance, I think it would be helpful if you could educate us around.
Sure, sure, I will. Every, every year, when we, we have been doing a bond sale every year for about the last 10 years and using our debt service funding to, to support those bonds. So every year, after the new CPI factor comes out end of January, which is usually when we're contemplating sales early in the spring, we do work with Spear Financial, our bond financial advisors, on estimates of the debt service. Our debt service limit used to be a fixed amount, which came into place when tax caps came in in the '94 tax levy year. So the debt service was established by the amount of debt that was outstanding in the levy year prior to the tax cap coming into effect. So District 65 had about 4.8 million of debt that was paid back in the 1993 levy year. So non-referendum debt. So that became the established debt service limit. That's how districts received a debt service limit. That amount was fixed up until a law that allows that, that debt service limit to go up each year by the consumer price index factor. And that change went into effect with the '09 levy year. So now, the debt service is not a fixed amount, but rather every year, as we're contemplating sales, it's estimated. Spear has used a 2% estimate in their projections of what's available. That has been very accurate with the 10-year average of CPI factors. However, with the two most recent years of reduced CPI factors, and we talk about this with our tax levy, two years ago, the CPI factor was 0.8. The most recent factor is 0.7. So the new five-year average of CPI factors is 1.54. So Spear Financial did rerun our debt service, estimated debt service limits using a 1.5 projection, which is in line with the district's new assumption for our operating financial projections, we changed to a 1.5 assumption. Our debt service works such that if we don't use what's available in a levy year, we forever lose that amount. So we've been trying to be very accurate with what's available in future levy years so we can maximize our bonding capacity. So with the reduction, and debt service payments can be spread out over 20 years. So when we have an estimate of our available debt service limit, it's going out 20 years. So that estimate for 2017, when we had a prior assumption of 2%, and before we knew what the latest CPI factor was, of 0.7, we were estimating to have about 6 million available in 2017. That was actually a conservative number. The actual number is closer to 7 million. We've always tried to be very conservative in what we use for our estimates. But with rerunning those estimates with the lower CPI factor of 0.7, which is a very recent factor, and using the lower assumption of 1.5%, that reduces the estimated debt service available limit from, for 2017, from an estimated 4.8 million down to an estimated 2.6 million. So that's not a change just for one levy year, but it's going out 20 levy years and estimating the available limit. So that is quite a reduction over the previous assumptions. To be more conservative, we have used in the past 2.5 million as the assumption of becoming available with each future levy year. So each January 1st, when we can access another levy year of debt service, we have assumed 2.5 million would be available for principal issuance and capital project use. We are reducing that estimate, just to be more conservative, down to a $2 million estimate for each year going forward. We have been spending our debt service limit down over prior years with our bond sales, and things were expected to be tight next year. But with this new run projection, things are even tighter. And that is why I'm recommending that we not try to issue bonds in 2017. Our bond rating was kept the same when Moody's did, did rate us. They look at the financial stability and leadership of the district. They've looked at increasing cash balances. Actually, our state financial rating increased a little because of expense reductions we made last year. So all of those factors were taken into account by Moody's in keeping our rating the same. However, with the debt service limit being so much lower even than the original estimate, they are recommending we not sell bonds in 2017 because they feel our, our bond rating would be reduced if we tried to sell with such a limited access in 2017, and that would cost higher interest rates. So that's why we're being conservative with these new estimates, and we're recommending this bond sale, which did come in very, very competitively. It will allow us, allow some of those funds to drop to the cash balance and help make technology lease payments for 2017, which is a current obligation. So we're recommending we not issue bonds a year from now and let the debt service build up a little bit and do, consider issuing in the spring of 2018.
And these bonds, which you've already approved before, and that are now being, the resolution is to.
Accept the final sale.
Accept the sale. These have already been sold on the market. And so the one logical question as well, if there's projections for the future that say that we might be in more dire straits, why are we doing this now? And the timing was such that we, Mary, you can explain this.
Sure.
That the recalculation using the CPI came after we'd already done action on these bonds.
Yes, that is true. However, the, the bond sale amount is actually a very good amount. We have projects that we cannot postpone, such as our asbestos abatement plumbing requirements and technology lease payments. And, and also, the dollar amount of this bond sale will allow us to cover next year expenditures as well. So that's why we are recommending the rescind of the roof bid for King Arts. We'll do that work once we have more available funding. And so that's tying this piece into the next.
So that's rescinding the 2016 work of, for King Arts?
Yes, the King Arts, so we're recommending that, in the next action item, that the King Arts roof bid be rejected and that work be postponed.
Okay. Why are we not, okay, I understand the 1.1 million for existing leases were obligated to that. The $400,000 for software and related costs and $400,000 for new equipment leases purchased. I know we've discussed that and we talked about it already, but I feel like in light of this sort of new landscape that we're looking at, and particularly with the $400,000 for new equipment leases. What is that obligating us to in the future?
Well, Ms. Beersley is working on what that purchase would look like. We are looking at taking the $400,000 for new equipment and, and using that to carry the district over a two-year period. Without a bond sale next year, there would not be an additional $400,000 coming next year. So that $400,000 from this bond sale is, is going to have to carry the district for two years until we can issue again in the spring of 18.
Okay, but what, so, but, what, so, I mean, 1.1 million in the existing leases is stuff.
Yes.
For equipment that we purchased in the past.
Yes.
What is, I guess what I'm saying is, is it wise for us to be even making this $400,000 purchase right now, knowing that it's going to obligate us to leases that we're going to have to pay up for a certain number of years?
Sure. We are not recommending a lease at this moment. We're not recommending an additional lease. The $400,000 is cash that will come in from this bond sale. It will be used by technology to purchase, and we're going to be hearing what their plan is with, with this reduced amount, because that $400,000 will have to carry them two years for purchases. It would not, it would not be wise at this time to enter an additional lease because, as we know, lease payments obligate us to future-year payments. And next year, we have a lease payment of around $800,000 for 2017. It's due, I think, in July of 17. And that's where the cash from, from not doing the roof project would cover us for next year.
Okay, so nothing in the new purchases then is going to obligate us to future lease payments?
That is, that is correct. That is correct.
Right. And just, you know, I have to say, like, when you say, once we have money for King Lab, the operative word there is "once" and like, when that's going to happen. And I just fundamentally, and I know you're sick of hearing me say this, but a roof lasts 20 years or more, and we're paying for leased equipment on 20-year bonds. It just does not make financial sense. And I know we have tough decisions ahead of us about how technology gets financed, but these, you know, we're in, we're in a place where we're making, choosing between two bad options. And I just, I cannot, I can't see, especially if we're going to forego having a bond sale next year, making, this is, just strikes me as highly irresponsible.
I mean, I have to agree with Jennifer that, you know, we've, I see, you know, we've moved 50,000 of technology expenses into operating, and we've talked about, you know, obviously on the operating side, we have, you know, the news isn't good there either. But I feel like we need to push that conversation more. Because I, right now, I don't feel like we're having an honest comparison or, we, we can't truly prioritize because, well, we've talked about with the roofing and masonry, and already with the roofing plan, it's stretched out, it's like, isn't it, like a 10-year plan stretched out over 20 years or something to that effect? I mean, it's already a very.
38 years, I think.
Is it that, well, yes, something ridiculous. And now we're talking about just not doing a roofing project.
But it's the capital.
But it's the capital. But it's the capital. I mean, that, I don't, I don't see how we can, because of the way we've set it up, we're forced to prioritize technology over that roof.
But in this particular case, we have to pay the lease that's already obligated.
No, I understand. We all have to pay that.
And we all know that you were, this all happened before you got here, right?
Right. I guess what I'm saying is, I think we need to push the conversation and push those hard decisions of moving this all into operating sooner than, rather than later. And then it's going to be difficult, and it's going to cause difficult conversations within our operating budget. But at least those are more honest comparisons, and we can really make priorities that I think are more comparable and honest priorities than what we're doing right now. And I, you know, so delaying a roof, I don't, I mean, I just agree. I don't think that's really being responsible, and I don't, I just think we need to push that conversation sooner rather than later.
With the vote on the bond sale, what are we actually, we're just approving?
Yes, so you, the bonds have been sold.
It's already happened.
I know, I know. But our vote here
So the vote would be accepting the final, this is the final paperwork that you've all got now at your places. So you're accepting the final bond sale. So that's the vote.
So we're not authorizing at this point? Although is that The payments. The payments, but not the extra 400,000?
Well, the 400,000 is part of this, and the board did ask for more details to come back as to how that would be spent. And now that needs to be more creatively determined to cover next year as well.
So just to clarify, when we do vote on this, it's to
To accept the sale.
Finalize the sale and authorize the lease payments, but not the 400,000?
Right, the 400,000. We will be coming, we will be coming back to the board, I believe, in May with a more concrete plan of the 400,000 elders' spend.
In theory, and I'm not saying we're doing this, but in theory, at that point, we could say, "We don't want that 400,000 to come out of us."
We want to keep that for, absolutely.
Or that it needs to be come out of the operating budget or whatever.
And the 400,000 of the sale could drop to the bottom line. We have three years to use a cash balance, and we are not at a shortage of having projects to spend it on.
Okay.
We just have to know that, you know, the ramification of moving 400,000 into the next fiscal year budget, when we have roughly 600,000 deficit already, 500,000 deficit, means that it's a million-dollar deficit.
Oh, understood. Like I said, I fully understand that it's a difficult decision that I began.
It's why I was asking about the pickup trucks, right? Every little, like, every bit matters.
I have one follow-on question. So if the CPI projections, the debt service projections are revised annually, and the trailing five-year CPI is going to go down, right? Unless we get into a high-interest environment between now and December, the likelihood that it's going to be 1% or lower is pretty high, right? So then, we might get to a point where the future bond debt service capacity goes from, you know, 2.6, it comes down from 1.5 to 1% on CPI.
Right.
Which, given this reduction, could mean that we have, I don't know, you know, a million dollars or less than a million of debt service capacity. I just like, if I could ask our advisors, is that scenario likely? And then which bond year would that impact, FY '18?
Raffely, did you want to? We have Darryl Davidson, our bond counsel, and Raffely McKenzie from Spear Financial.
Good evening. So in cutting the, the amount of debt that the district can issue, we start with the current year. So we start with, say, so for example, if I could backtrack to last year when we did the projection, we had the point, let's just go back a little bit. So in 2010, and I made some notes here, 2010, 11, 12, 13, the CPI was 3%, 1.7, 2.3. So we had really good increases. The only year we had the dip was last year and this year. So last year, when we did the projection, and the projection is based on the district's debt service extension base, and it's a compounding 2% all through the life of the bond, through the 20-year period. So during that time, we did a debt analysis with a 2%, which we realized we could afford a 6 million bond issue. Then the CPI for '17 came out this year, February, and that's when we said, "Okay, I think we, you know, Dr. Brown and I got on the phone, and we said, 'We have to be a little bit more conservative here because of these low percentages that came in this second CPI, 0.7.'" So once that 0.7 comes in, now that's a trickle-in effect, a compound effect. In addition to that, there's now 1.5% from 2%. So with that amount, we realized that the district does not have the capacity anymore to issue that 6. You can now issue less. So this year, with the 3.6 million, 3,650, we're at the end of your 20-year mark. In other words, your early years of available debt service base, the district is literally at its capacity. So I said to Dr. Brown, "With the next bond issue, you can only go into the, you have to literally wait until the next calendar year comes around, because your bond issue can go no more than 20 years."
So roughly, I'm sorry, the question was though, if the CPI is reduced further to 1%, what levy years would that affect us? And then
So if that was the case, then it could affect '18, '19, there are a number of years that it could affect, because most of these levies are close to the max at this point. However, what has happened is with the 5% loss in costs that the district has levied through Cook County, we've been able to cover, even in the few, in the, in the past, sorry, where we've had that 0.7, for example, we've been able to recoup and cover those additional amounts that the district has gone, so to speak, over that DSCB. So we, and, and, I guess, Courtney, for us, we, the issue here though is, if we are not levying the maximum DSCB for these debt, the district eventually loses that amount. So if you don't use it, you lose it, and you literally have to move into the next fiscal or calendar year.
Let me
I appreciate all that, but I don't think it answered my question.
Let me, let me answer that question. The, the district is issuing bonds pursuant to a set formula. The formula has some ups, the formula has some downs, and you're, if you were to look at this program for the last nine or 10 years, the district has had a series of bond issuances that have been structured to, in effect, use the available debt service extension base for capital projects. So if you're in this particular bond issue, we're filling up the debt service extension base in the 20th year, in the final year, because all the prior years have debt service extension-based usage based on existing bond issues. So the program based on the formula, if it does not change, is nearing its end. So every year that there is a new CPI is a new calculation. So what we've done, and we've actually done a very good job, is we've used the available debt service extension base. We've not overused it. We haven't overpledged money to bondholders, because if you were to do that, you'd have to then take money out of the general fund. So in order to pay existing debt service that really needs to be paid through the debt service extension base. So we've been very careful in order to use the available funds historically, and the future years are calculated. So as, so if we went to 10% inflation in the economy, the CPI would go up, and your available debt service extension base would go up. That's the nature of the formula. So if it goes down to 0.1, that means the debt service extension base number will have a tendency to fall.
I get it. I totally get that.
So it's an immediate effect. So it, the formula is set unless it's changed by the General Assembly.
So, so my question is, because this is forward-looking, right? And I believe, so we went from 0.7, 0.8, there actually was a 1.5 previous to that. So it's not, the CPIs have been gone progressively.
I want to build on that, because I just went back and looked, because I think the numbers are really different than what you said. The last six were 0.7, 0.8, 1.5, 1.7. There was a year with 3 and 1.5. That's going back to 2010, and I think those are lower than the ones that you cited. And I think that's important.
So the trend is downward, and, and so I could conceivably see that we come out, if we skip bond issuance next year, to build up the base, and we have 4.6 million potentially of issue. But that's based on a 1.5 projection that in a trailing five years as of 2018 is going to probably look more like 1.0. So that 4.6 quickly evaporates, I guess, back down to, you know, to some smaller amount. So that's what I'm really just trying to understand. The order of magnitude here, it looks like, you know, if we have low, if we have low CPI years, which in a post-recession society seems like that's what it's, what's happening, this is going to continue to get small, our small, our extension base is going to continue to get smaller and smaller.
Yes.
Is that a correct statement?
Yes, that is correct.
In order to have a greater debt service extension base, you have to go to the holders' stage.
Correct.
Let me just ask, because, you know, I've, all of us have been here for a few years.
I don't remember ever having this conversation before. And last year, with a 0.8 CPI, I think we would have experienced the same sort of conversation. I'm just wondering if anyone else on the board remembers talking about this in the past, that because of the way the formula is built, that it was going to decrease our debt service availability? I certainly don't have that recollection.
I don't either. And it may be related to the fact that you said this is a 20-year horizon, which previously the formulas were coming off of the last 20 years. It's kind of my understanding of interpreting what you said.
Although every year, every year, our debt service has been recalculated. It's estimated every year, because once there's a known CPI factor, just like our tax levy, that's one more year of a known base amount. Sorry.
Have we revised it down previously?
We have, yes, we have, we've revised it down with every CPI factor. So, but it depends on what, what, you know, we've used a 2% assumption going forward as we had in our operating projections prior to this year. So yes, every year, when we're looking to issue debt, Spear runs an estimate of what the available debt service limit is. I have always used a more conservative number when putting it in a board report. If she's telling me we have 8 million, I'm saying it's 5.5 million. So I've always been more conservative in the number estimating our debt service. But it has been, the estimated debt service is updated every year, just like our tax levy estimates are.
So have we been using 2% for some time?
We have been using 2%.
So it hasn't gone, we haven't reduced it down from 2.5?
That's correct. And it used to be 2.5%. It's now, it's been at 2% for quite a while, and we're now reducing it to 1.5 as we are the operating projections.
And with the 0.8 that we had last year, there was sufficient room available in the DSCB, even as we look to the future. We were okay. But when the 0.7 came in this year, we realized that we needed to downsize that projection on the compounding of the available debt service of the district. And that was a necessary conversation for us to have because of your needs, of your capital project needs, and, you know, just talking about what was available to you at this point based on the new projections.
But could, one of the questions that I hear is, could we have predicted that earlier? I mean, this in many ways comes as a surprise, as we bring it before the board in the end of March, when we've been working on our operating side with CPI, and everybody around this panel knows that it's 0.7. So why are we here on March 21st, 21st, having this conversation, not February 21st and not January 21st?
Well, the CPI became available in February. So the projections that we had were based on the actual CPI, the 2, the 3, the 1.7, and then the 0.8. So that was, the 6 million was based on that, and we were fine. But then, as we worked with the numbers and as we worked with how long these bonds were, that's another part of it, and what was available, these bonds were, if you look at your debt schedule, the debt service, majority of the debt service is in that 20th year. So as we look at the pattern of this debt schedule, this is, again, the reason why we had this discussion as to, with this new CPI coming in and working it into our numbers, our debt plan, we realized we needed to make this adjustment.
Oh, so you have to realize that the request, you know, the discussion with the size of the projects that we wanted was approximately this 3.6 to 3.7. The district's, you know, focus is on the current bond issue and the current projects. So during, during the structuring of this bond issue, looking at what the numbers came out, this is, this is sort of the warning or the facts of the way the formula works as we structure this one, looking at the next. So it, you know, we don't, you know, it could change for next year, but the formula, the nature of what's going on here, the district's past practices, the debt service extension base is filled out, and it leaves you less room to maneuver because you're at the end and not in the beginning.
I think where I'm, where I've been confused, and I apologize for needing to sort through this, but I'm just wanting to see if the other board members are where I am, is that I felt like what we've been told is, we receive approximately 2.5 million every year in new debt service funds that become available. We've always been given that number as a fixed figure, as opposed to something that is dependent on something else. And I see lots of nodding, so I'm not alone. And that is the information that we got through this packet and now through this conversation is a significant shift away from the message that I've heard for five years. And it's problematic, because we've been making capital decisions based on a predictable, reasonably fixed amount. It was never, we weren't told it's exactly 2.5, but we were told it's about 2.5. And now we're being told it's variable.
And I would add to that, that what was in, what was available as debt service, I always thought was kind of a fixed, like seeing, you know, go from 4.8 to 2.6 or whatever those exact numbers are. I didn't realize that number could go down based on the CPI adjustment as well. So I would add that to, in addition to not knowing that every, 2.5 million every year could change.
And I think on top of this, we have to be very clear that if you oversell, or if you over, if you overpledge
Correct.
Then you owe money out of general
Right.
To pay those bondholders. So, I mean
A couple things. Yes, we are allowed to levy, and we do levy, the 5% increase on our debt service obligation. So we're bringing in additional money through our tax levy, and that is falling to the cash balance, and we can use that certainly to help make a debt payment if needed. We have always brought in more than enough money to make those payments, and that practice will continue. When I have mentioned in the memos, when I review capital project recommendations, I do always provide Spear's update of the estimated debt service available limit, and I do say that it is dependent upon interest rates and CPI factors. I certainly could have explained that more in detail. Spear is still estimating we would have 2.5 million available in each future levy year. However, to be more conservative, I would rather we work with the figure of $2 million with each levy you're rolling on, and that is more conservative than their estimates.
So what will shift it from 2.5 to 2? What, what, what reality will make that estimate?
The shift, the shift could be higher interest rates in addition to a lower CPI. So if
Lower than what? Or just low?
Lower than 1.5.
Lower than the 0.7, or that we have calculated in your numbers right now.
It's a tax, it's a tax cap formula. So when it was, when it was in place in the mid-'90s, the tax cap, for, if, if, it only allows tax collections to grow slightly. At the beginning, it was a fixed number, but then they changed and it allowed, you know, an inflation factor to come out. But you're dealing with the tax cap formula. So, and, and this particular formula has different dynamics. If there's inflation in the economy, the district's ability to tax and get additional taxes will go up. If there is less inflation in the economy, the district's ability and the tax cap will go down. And the other, you just have to realize that realize that if, depending on where you are, you have, if you're in the beginning of this process, you have more flexibility. Because you're at the end of this process, because of the use of the first 19 years of debt service extension base, that means that the effect of the CPI is increased because it's in the 20th year of a tax cap formula.
I mean, I think one of the things, and I don't know if it's appropriate here, is like the institutional history, one pager, two pager handout to educate us as board members about debt service extension base. And I know where you're going. There's a 20-year arc, and we're at the end of it. It constrains how you can use that money. And then, I mean, so I'm tracking, what's the question, Richard?
I don't think I have a question at this point.
Okay.
I am expressing frustration, because I feel like with all the conversations we've had about our capital projects and the amount that we've been looking at, both for our long-term planning and for near-term, we often look a year or two out, I feel like that this was predictable, that we, we knew months ago, as we were looking at CPI throughout 2015, we saw that it was going to be low. We knew what our capital projects were going, you know, we had a good sense in the fall of what our capital projects were going to be. And I feel like, you know, we could have found out certainly a month sooner. I think we could have heard potential warning of, hey, as we're looking at how CPI is tracking and looking at what you're projecting to spend, and we're looking at the 20-year arc, which is, I think, the piece that we've been missing.
Yep.
Then, this is what we're seeing. And I don't think we got that. And for me, that's a problem. So you're not hearing a question, you're hearing frustration. I mean, because now we're being, we're pulling a major project that none of us here expected to pull.
Yeah, and I think not only that, but I think we're going to have to go back to finance and really take a look at our, our plans for the next couple of years and what this, how this impacts it. But this has been helpful, of course, sobering. But I don't think, I think this concern we have doesn't really change what we need to do today. It just changes what we need to do in finance unless any of our board members...
I agree.
...feel differently. So thank you very much for the explanation. I think we should probably vote on this.
Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
I'm in Epstein.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes, the motion passes 5 to 1, to 0. We're on to the King Arts, the roofing and masonry. And Omar's not here. So Cindy, would you read that for us?
I move that the Board of Education rescind its December 14, 14th, 2015 approval of the roofing masonry bid for King Arts School with A1 roofing and reject all bids the Board received for such work.
Second?
Second.
And have we received an adequate update? Or do we have any more discussion of this? We're ready to vote on this. Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes, the motion passes 6 to 0. Approval of Head Start Self-Assessment Plan. Jennifer?
I move that the Board of Education approve the Head Start Self-Assessment Plans for the 2015 and 16 and 2016, 17 school years.
Second. So do we need a discussion, any introductions? Was it self-explanatory in the packet?
There was a pretty good...
Yeah, okay. If that runs fine, no questions. All right, we'll have a roll call, please. Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes, motion passes 6 to 0. Approval of the Head Start Continuation Application Request for Extension. Kansas?
I move that the Board of Education approve the Head Start Continuation Application Request for an extension of 15 days as required by the Head Start Performance Standards.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Mr. Rikus?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Cartha?
Yes.
Ms. Quattrucci?
Yes, motion passes 6 to 0. Our first discussion item is the Evanston Community Schools Initiative, Part One. And Izzy and Maria are coming up.
Erin?
Erin.
Partners.
Okay.
Jim is here.
Everyone who wants to, who's participating, I'm not sure.
Hold up the man, please.
Come on up.
Pull up more chairs.
I think Maria's going to introduce, or call?
Sure, while everyone, you want to...
Go ahead.
No, go for it.
All right, let me start, as we all get together. And I want to go back to some of the earlier comments that we were saying about Pedro Noguera and his really interesting talk to the Evanston community last week. And when he was looking at all sorts of ways to think about school, school improvement, focusing on a broad range of students from a broad range of backgrounds, he really focuses on one of his solution strategies of community schools. And that the community schools, which is a deep commitment to the school itself, parent involvement, engaged wraparound services that will make a difference in the lives of students and parents, will make a difference. He evoked the Harlem Children's Zone as one of the most interesting and successful examples. And indeed, there's a community schools coalition around this country that is really working on a wide range of models that really provide the type of services and engagement that a school community needs, again, starting with students and their parents, but then reaching into the community. So we're, we're very excited about the potential for community schools. We've been fortunate to be partnering with our lead agency, YOU, on doing this work, and that's what we'll talk about tonight. And we're also equally excited about where we go with community schools, both with YOU and perhaps with other community agencies. And I think that's where, I just want to make sure that we underscore the importance of the work we've done to date and the potential for the future.
And I would just like to welcome our guests from YOU. It looks like Erin Moore is going to take the mic first, and Seth Green and Leslie Kennedy are here as well. We have parents from SHOOT, Principal of SHOOT, Jim McCollin here, to talk about the work from SHOOT. And just as a bit of a preface, you remember in our strategic plan, we highlighted the importance of leveraging lessons learned from the community schools work. And that was really intentional language set by the committee that was working on family and community engagement, that didn't just say, expand community schools, even though in many people's hearts, we want to go in that way. But we stopped and put language in there that said, leverage lessons learned. And that was really meant to create an intentional moment to review, reflect, and think about how we can learn and build going forward, and do it with intentionality, and do it with an aim to improve and really think about realizing the potential of community schools in Evanston. So that's what we're going to talk about today as a first step towards that.
Good greetings, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm going to be going to turn it over to Erin Moore, who is our leader for this work, and to our internal panel. I just want to echo what Dr. Moore talked about in terms of the centrality of community schools, the goals of the district, et cetera. Pedro Noguera being a recent example really bringing that here. And I want to thank the district, because, you know, Harlem Children's Zone was built because Jeffrey Canada couldn't rely on its schools. And the beauty of this is that what we're building together is Harlem Children's Zone, and the structural quality in the schools is beginning in a place that is excellent. And so what we're trying to solve for is that whole set of community resources around that construction that allows it to absorb it. So I just want to say how grateful we are to be able to envision that model with a great start, and your partnership. I also just want to point out Julia's point, that we are today talking about progress to date, and then we're going to be back in three weeks to talk about the expansion, very much based on the reflection that we have tonight, and how we can scale this in a way that is, you know, really leveraging the lessons and the learning to date. So if we go forward in the, in the beginning, I'll just briefly point out, as already said, that this is building on the strategic plan. You see there the folks that we have provided, more of all the five essentials, you know, then, whether it been Dr. Noguera, or you can learn a week ago, you know, are all also based on the sculpture of the law. And YOU in our strategic plan, this is a glinted initial plan that hasn't yet been released, because we're still writing it. But this part has been, and now it's affirmed, that we want to partner with schools to foster a sense of belonging and mutual partnership. Really believing that the only way we can succeed in our school time is if this whole community, this whole ecosystem is successful, very much calling, you know, the core work of critical career on a micro level impact level. So finally, if we fully go forward in the lead order, and I'm going to turn it over to Erin. Just to remind everyone, the core idea of community schools is that we have shared leadership across a wide community of stakeholders. And then I would describe it, to use District 65's terms, or whatever it takes on, this is about really thinking holistically about all human families and leveraging that community school partnership to get there. So I'm going to turn it over to Erin.
Thank you. Well, I, so, once again, I'll introduce myself. My name is Erin Moore, and I am the Director of Community Schools at YOU as of, I think, minimum five at this point. So I know I have big shoes to fill, but I'm really excited to meet those of you who I haven't met yet. And I have the pleasure of walking through our new community schools logic model, which I, if you had asked me a year ago if I would ever be this enthusiastic about a diagram of bubbles that's very intentional and takes us through a plan and a direction, I would have been like, oh, but this, this is really exciting, because it represents formalizing all of the learning and planning and growing that we've been doing over the last two and a half years at SHOOT. So I'm going to kind of just super high-level walk us through this, because I know it can, for folks who aren't super familiar with logic models, I think it bears kind of plotting through the flow of this diagram. And I also do want to name before I start that, that this has really been a collective labor of love of both the Evanston Community Schools Initiative, Leadership Council, and our small working group of YOU at District 65, that has really spent the last six, seven months rolling up our sleeves and digging into this, to this product that you have in front of you. So in the left column, the inputs, this is kind of, if you use the analogy of a recipe, this would be your ingredients. So what are the resources and the things that you want to start the process of developing a community school with? And so we've sort of divided those into three categories. Your audience, so for us, those are the people we want to engage and work with and serve, youth, families in the community. The roles or the key functions involved. So for us, that's the community school manager, the community school action team, the leadership of the school, and other community partners that are already engaged in that school, providing services and programming. And finally, as we just heard, a lot of presentation about resources are really important. And so you need funding to seed the initiative, you need space in the school building, you need some supplies and materials, and you need some key leading infrastructure to get this thing off the ground. Moving into the right, so the activities and outputs column, this kind of is broken into two prongs and is intended to be read left to right and then top to bottom. So it kind of follows an if this, then this, and then moving on to the next step. So to use our recipe analogy, this would kind of be the step-by-step way that you would put the ingredients together. So for us, that starts with developing shared leadership. And as Seth said, we found that it's incredibly important for a community school to really prioritize building the capacities of a diverse and representative group of school stakeholders early in the work, to really start off on that footing of doing with and not doing for. And so for us, that's our parent leadership work, which you're going to hear a little bit more about, as well as forming our community school action team. So that's a group of school stakeholders, parents, staff, partners, potentially youth and school administration, that really digs in to take a sense of collective ownership in the work. And so if you do that, then you have engaged stakeholders. You have people who really want to own this work with you, who feel a deep sense of commitment and belonging to the work, and you have representative decision-making, so that those folks who are most impacted by the programs you bring into your community school have a strong voice in making it so. So then moving down, so once you've developed this shared leadership, and you have these folks who are really engaged to do it with you, then you build your collective vision. And that's that micro-level collective impact piece that Seth talked about. So that community school action team, made up of all those stakeholders, brings all of their needs assessment and asset mapping information to the table. They toss it back and forth, and they say, we want the priorities of our community school to be this, because we believe this reflects what our school community needs. This is some benchmarks along the way that's going to show how we measure that. These are the programs we want to put in place under each of those categories. And then moving to the right, the idea is that then you have aligned and integrated services. So you become not just a school that's very open to partnership and welcoming to all kinds of service providers, but all of those programs and partnerships are connected to goals, are aligned with one another, gaps in services are addressed, duplication is reduced, and strong systems for sort of creating a pipeline from the school day to out-of-school time is created. And then moving down to the third row, this is the, this is getting towards that vision that Seth was talking about. So the community school as a hub of all kinds of resources and supports in the community, kind of a one-stop shop, if you will, for families, where there's multiple partners located in the building, providing programming during out-of-school time, in the mornings, et cetera. And really, the ultimate vision is that the whole child needs are met. So as Seth said, barriers to learning are removed, students feel an incredible sense of belonging in the school, and they have all of their basic needs, as well as enrichment opportunities, health and wellness, et cetera, et cetera. And then finally, in the outcomes column, so back to our recipe analogy, this is the thing that you made, whether you were baking a cake or a lasagna, this is the thing. And we've sort of broken it up into five categories. The first three are, might be considered more of the immediate. So we expect to see gains in student achievement, student engagement, and family and community engagement. And then our long-term sort of north star sort of shows that education and community development can really go hand in hand. So if we have strong schools within this model, we're going to be lifting up the whole community and promoting the health and wellbeing of all. So that's my super high-level logic model unveiling. It's so exciting to me to be able to share this with you, because really, as those of you who've been on the board for a while know, this level of formality of our model and articulating it just hasn't existed, quite frankly. And so I'm extremely happy we've been able to share that. And from there, I really want to turn it over to some of our panelists, who, as you all know, have been more involved in the work to date at SHOOT than I have. I've put just a few highlights up on our slide, so total number of people that have been served by community school programs at SHOOT in years one through three, some data on our parent leadership training program, and our sort of other two flagship programs, our Healthy Kids Market and our Vision Clinic. But I really want to have me stop talking and turn it over to, of course, Mr. McCollin, and then our parent leaders, who's a favorite part, and I'll see who wants to share, kind of their take on what the outcomes and the early successes at SHOOT have been.
So I think that from the, from the time we had the auditorium presented to us, one of the things that we've talked a lot about is the relationship, that you reach out to new community schools. One of the things that came along was, were we the right place for it, were we good fit for it? And the answer was yes, even though we felt like we had a pretty strong and vibrant parent community who felt belonging to the school, that there was the opportunity for us to have parents who may not have been in the door as either in PPA or in ways that were kind of more of a strong connection to what was going on at home and within the school, to give that opportunity. And so a few of the things that we had happen early on were things related to student help, whether it was for the eyeglasses that we were able to get kids. As things developed, relations who appeared tonight that were part of the panel group that has met, and they are meeting all the time. They have their own space, they have the things that they are focused on, the things that they have done. And it is one of the really community feel events when they have something that goes on. Not to be, not that it's exclusive, but it is that it is families that they've reached out to that may have been underrepresented... it is families that they've reached out to that may have been underrepresented for us within the PTA, um, as that has gone all over time, the seventeen years that I've been at SHU. Uh, and it's really, it's just been something that's been exceptional, to see the way that it has developed and that it has thrived, um, with the ladies who are here. And even if they have gone on, uh, with some of the kids they've stayed, so their kids are at the high school, uh, and they are still part of what's going on for us. So to me, that's a really big indicator for how the process has helped that connection build. Uh, and it is not the next, that is suddenly next year, there'll be forty-five parents moving, and then a hundred and ten, and then three hundred and five. It's, it's a slower process, it is. And when you're really building a quality, um, quality relationship with people that they can trust and that they can sustain and back and take to, not only their families, uh, their friends to ask them to be part of, uh, that is one of the things that's there. I know that, that as the discussion becomes expansion to other communities, I know that a couple of years back, there was, I referenced it a couple of times in talking with Erin, Seth, it was at one meeting that morning at the YOU, uh, that was really big for people who were there from the community. People wanted to know, "Why not our school, not right, why not right now, and let's do it everywhere right this second?" Um, and I just have to say, in all honesty, that, um, it can't happen without a onsite community school manager who can take over the things that are there, and, and then sustaining that is also tough, because they've added things like the Healthy Kids Market. Um, it is very time-consuming to keep things sustained, organized, moving, staying connected. Uh, it does take an awful lot of energy. It's not something that, uh, as I've had some of my father's school professors ask, "I, I don't want to see the community schools. I'm part of what's going on, I'm supportive of what's going on, but I do not make any, any claim to be the one that is out in the front running it and organizing it, because I'm not." It has been a tremendous job over the course of time, and we've had to change in a couple of key leadership roles to keep it moving. Um, and obviously, one of the great things is that if they have something that is, is moving and somebody who has to step in, that continues to move forward. Um, but you do have the reality of some of the newcomers, and there's going to be a moment where they've got to kind of make sure that they can continue the relationships and extend them even further and grow that, uh, in different areas. So, the, everything that I can say, um, positive for community schools is that it's just been a phenomenal experience, and it's been one that we wouldn't have without this opportunity, uh, and it has made the SHU family that much stronger.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Avery-Rodriguez. Um, I've been a Palm member for two years now. Um, I am currently a Palm member, and I'm also a peer trainer. So apparently, I was also training the next month to join Palm. So Palm, me, has been in my studies, um, to getting more connected to schools out here in District 65. So when I first started out, I didn't feel welcome, I didn't feel connected. And then, then while you presented parent leadership, I jumped on board. I didn't know how to be involved, but all I know is, I want to be involved with parents that's connected. And so, we've been given space so that we can come together and, you know, talk about what's going on in our community, uh, continue to do outreach to parents, and just continuing to, you know, see how we can help others in our community. And I can say it has helped me in many ways, and as far as putting my goals and as far as with my family. Um, right now, my kids have moved on to the ETHSA in the high school, but yet they still want to know what's the next community adventure they can help plan. Uh, you guys need to find some community service worker where you at? No, please, can you just ask Mrs. LaDu, can we come and set something up? Then my oldest son, he's a senior, and he always says, "Well, you know, um, you guys are lucky to be in conversation with you guys in plan, because I'm going to take over me. And, you know, I'm going to set something big for the community." So it has been tremendous in helping set family goals and helping us to be models for our children. We have had chances to even participate in the Healthy Kids School Market, where, where we're seeing familiar faces or people see our faces and they become more confident. So this leadership program has really given us the space to connect with parents and to actually come together and analyze, uh, how we can make our community better, how we can, you know, better improve our kids' success, how we can better improve families at, at SHU Elementary. So, um, this parent leadership experience that ran wonderful, me and I just hope to continue.
Ah, sí, por favor, ¿cómo van todo en español? Buenas noches. Buenas noches, hablo español. Este, es un orgullo estar en, con ellos. Mis hijos han estado en el programa de Juárez Louis desde los tres, desde el año. Okay. So, it's, it's a point of pride for her to be with us here tonight and represent community schools with YOU. Her kids have been involved with YOU programs since, since, uh, hasta ahora. Este, es una gran experiencia que he tenido ser miembro de Palm. Eh, lo empecé hace tres años, y ahora soy conjunto con Luis, soy entrenadora, y es una, de la reciente a la hora de experiencia. It's been a wonderful experience to become part of Palm. She is also alongside Liz, acting as a peer trainer, bringing new parents into Palm and facilitating workshops, and it's been a joy. Folks, here.
Tenemos lo que hice en family marketing, y de verdad queremos que si vean todas las familias que van, es, es bien, bien interesante que se espalda a otras escuelas, o si es la posibilidad de serlo.
She's been heavily involved in the Healthy Kids Market, volunteering there, and it's been an amazing experience to see people coming into it, and, and she's excited about the potential that it could expand to other.
Las familias se sienten más cómodas también incluso, eh, también en otras áreas pueden nos, nos ver a nosotros y agudamos en otra área, si no tienen acceso como, ya eran escuela o.
Comes about, the Kids Market has really been an entry point for new parents to get to know the faces of Palm and to think about getting involved in other deeper ways.
Y hay, y hay mucha colección lo que es la comunidad, la escuela, maestros. Es uno de los que se trata de, de ayudar a, a la comunidad más que nada.
There should be more connections between parents, schools, and community resources to strengthen that, that network.
Pues esto sería todo, y para mí es lo de barra ajeno, lo personal, en lo material, este, todas las metas que yo quería alcanzar, lo logré gracias a su mano, el curso de padres y líderes.
It's been a tremendous personal experience for her as well, um, seeing her ability to achieve her personal goals through the support of the team as well. Yes. So I do, before we move on from highlights from SHU, I want to just make sure everyone knows, so Palm, do you guys want to share what Palm stands for? I don't know if we have her, actually.
Yeah, Palm stands for Parent Palm Leadership.
And so this is a parent team that formed out of two cycles of self-family and team training, which is the workshop model from COFE, Community Organizing and Family Issues. Um, and, and their model is really to do a six-week intensive leadership training, which both Rosio and Liz have been facilitators of, and then to encourage the parents who take that training to join the parent action team and to continue cultivating a vision and, and finding new platforms for that vision. Some little bit of context. Um, so lessons learned. So Maria very aptly kicked us off by saying a big part of what was laid out in Strategic Plan, and what we're here to talk about tonight, is that this really has been a process of planning, trying, assessing, adjusting, and so I'm just going to highlight a few of those key arcs, um, for you. The first, um, is the importance of infrastructure. So throughout the two and a half, two and three quarters years that we've been at SHU, it's been a process of gradually improving the infrastructure that surrounds our community school initiative. So when we started, it was very informal, we were just kind of like, "Let's try some stuff." Um, with our North Star, of course, of being the whole child, being the needs of the whole child, but over the last two and a half years, we have established strong partnership agreements in writing, memorandums of understanding, that outline what access to communication and information and data that we can use to make decisions about the community school. And that's been tremendously helpful in just from basic things like being able to look up the phone numbers of students we need to contact after referrals from the Vision Clinic, um, to being able to have district emails, so that we're on different email lists of teachers, I mean, et cetera, et cetera. It's tremendously, um, helpful in, in becoming part of what's going on at the school. Um, and that's something that has really strengthened over our two and a half years at SHU. The support that we've offered for the parent leadership work has also been a learning journey, and I think I heard, and I think you heard in Liz and Rosio's comments, um, really the importance of both developing strong parent networks of support among one another and moving toward concrete plans of action. And I think that's been a learning journey for YOU and for Palm of what is that best balance between the Palm team needs, being really about cultivating a support network and visiting a vision for change and community school decisions. And then finally, stakeholder engagement in the community school's vision. So, Q and A, we used an analogy a few meetings back about the legs of a table, and when you're launching a community school, you really need to resource all different stakeholder groups to feel that they're part of this community school's vision. And so I think what Rosio and Liz shared about the Healthy Kids Market, more parents coming in, but also staff getting involved in that effort. So there's probably three staff members at SHU who alternate being the night of coordinator of that market, and they work closely with the community school manager to strategize outreach and how to really make the market family-friendly and welcoming. And that might seem small, but it's been incredibly important at getting staff to feel like this community school vision is theirs, in a sense. Um, and the other thing that we've done this year toward that end is to break the YOU after-school program, which previously operated across the street in Grayson through church, into the SHU school building, again, to increase the connections between multiple stakeholders and this vision of the community school, of look what it looks and feels like when multiple programs are operating here in this one space. Um, so those are some of the lessons learned that I want to highlight and just sort of pull out from your packets. So moving forward, so our plans at SHU are to convene our community school action team this spring, um, to hold some kind of welcoming, um, orientation or meeting, breakfast, a few different venues for that have been thrown out, but we do, we are going to convene that this spring and hold one to two initial meetings to get those stakeholders engaged and practiced at creating a vision together, because at this point, they've now been meeting together in the same space. Um, they're going to talk about what the community school programs that exist are, kind of inventory them, and talk about what's working well and what the challenges have been. Um, and then moving into the fall, even formalize that even further through asset mapping needs assessment, the process I kind of laid out in the logic model. Um, and finally, continue our support for parent leadership at SHU. So let's just be calm, very clear towards that, um, developing relationships with parents and elevating their voices is, is, in essence, like the secret sauce of this initiative for us and what makes it different from other, from other issues. Um, and then also in the board report, you saw a lot of plans for a potential new site. So there's a quick detailed implementation plan, um, and some of the things that were listed in that plan that are different than where we started three years ago at SHU, um, is that we're going to start from the beginning with those, that stronger infrastructure, some of the stuff that I mentioned that we now have at SHU, and deepen it even further. So we want to do professional development for the whole staff at a potential new site to really get more training and experience with this model, um, and maybe even some cross-site professional development for our SHU pilot and our additional school, make some kind of like learning teams and, and learning relationships there. Um, and we want to have deeper integration with existing school and district teams. Um, so like our school climate teams and, um, I'm going to mess up some of the other acronyms, parent advisor, you know, there are a lot of teams, and we want this really to be working hand in hand with it, not duplicative, not leaving things undone, um, stronger integration there. Additionally, at the new site, we're going to convene the community school action team off of that, because, kind of going back to that legs of the table analogy, to really get staff and partners to feel a sense of ownership in this thing earlier, they need to start getting around the table and practicing making decisions together and holding a vision together. And finally, offering programs and services in year one that come directly from that community school action team. So the thought is that they're going to spend about the first half of the year assessing needs, mapping assets, getting practiced at working together, and then launch the new programs in year one based on those conversations. Um, and that the parent leadership development will have happened concurrently. So we want to continue doing amazing work that has really found fertile ground at SHU at the same time as developing the community school action team in year one at the new site, um, and then to kind of support the marriage of those two things moving into year two. So that's kind of the scope of tonight's presentation, and we wanted to close with just a reminder that we don't have information in front of you right now about the finances and the resource map and which new site you might go to, and, um, we don't have a, an evaluation plan that has a level of detail as the implementation plan that you saw in your packets, but it's coming very soon. So that's, that's what I'll leave you with.
Thank you, that was a wonderful presentation.
If I can, let me, first I'll tip my hat to our parents, who have been working so hard. One fantastic dedication, and dedication even after the kids move on. Tip my hat to Jim and, uh, the SHU staff, and, uh, and really to, to work on engaging in this work, not knowing exactly where it's going to go and still having a lot more work to do, so it's to Jim's credit as a leader of the building. I want to, uh, say thank you to Izzy Nunez and Kim Kelly and Maria Allison, who are part of our team. Izzy doing family and community engagement. Kim is our grants manager and is an extraordinary, um, has extraordinary focus on, on community organizing through previous work at Family Focus, and is a social worker by training, and is just an all-star, and Maria's been, uh, leading the charge as well, working with our colleagues from YOU. So I just want to make sure that we recognize all the hard work that's been done.
Wonderful. Um, should there be some questions?
I have.
Yes, a couple?
Oh, I've been excited about this ever since it started, and thank you for very thorough, very thorough, and, uh, and informative and fabulous report. Um, I had a couple, just a couple of questions. One, I think you might have answered, Jim, which is, um, there was a statistic in here that, um, of your parents' involvement, that, let's see, it was that they're forty-one percent were parents or caregivers of other Evanston youth, youth not SHU parents. Are these the people who wanted to stay involved even though their kids have gone off? Is that where that forty-one percent comes from?
Some, and you guys can speak to this.
Grandparents.
Ah. Grandparents. And we did, do want to speak to some of the recruiting that we did for the parent leadership workshops at our bigger schools and, and in the community, and that was a decision.
Well, um, we decided to do the outreach where Rochelle was really, she was really at the Healthy Kids Group Market, me and Erin, we were quite, um, showing, uh, outreach as, you know, um, telling people or telling the parents, letting them know that, you know, we are here, and we're here to help them develop using the local model, and, you know, and we want them on our team so we can hear their voices, because that's how we're doing. And, you know, if we could come together and bridge our chain and continue to analyze and see what's needed here in the community, then that's great. So we basically did, um, the Healthy Kids Group Market, or any opportunity that we see that something is happening in the U.S., we try to get out there, we try to do surveys, we try to do outreach, collect numbers, things like that.
That's a great, I think it's a great example of sort of expanding the partnership to even beyond SHU. I think that's, that's really a good example. Um, the other thing, um, I was looking at what Lincoln Junior High School is doing, and I noticed that they, um, have some, uh, services that are like a dental clinic and flu vaccinations, and are these in the, this type of thing being considered for your expansion?
Absolutely, and that's kind of why we chose to include that information in the board packets, to give you all a taste of what some community school programs and services can look like. I think it's worth noting that the social service landscape in District 69 is very different than it is here, so none, there really were no health wraparound services in that district, and this is actually my former position, so I, I'm a little bit of that maybe. Um, and so there, there was no, um, duplication of services, it was, it was fairly easy to approach the health department and a, and an organization that does school-based health services and say, "Come on in," and the school's like, "Bring them on in." And I think, um, those are examples of the types of partnerships that we would like to bring in here in the future. But I think in some of our schools, some of those programs already exist, and so then it's a matter of inviting those folks to the community school action team, learning from them what the outcomes are already then, and then leveraging the community school models to make them even better and stronger.
Well, I know that at the Head Start Self-Assessment that I attended last Friday, they were talking about dental care as being this sort of really overlooked area of urgent need because, um, gum disease and all sorts of things affect it, it was something like fifty percent of the kids. It was something like 50% of the kids in Head Start. And so if you can attack that and get that under control, then you have better school attendance and all sorts of good outcomes, so.
Jim?
We already have a dental clinic.
Oh, you do have a dental clinic?
The middle schools already have a free dental clinic for all families that come onsite and kids up in the middle, we just had it at the end of last week, it was two weeks away, where we had a large number of kids who had a dental clinic that took place outside.
Great.
And I'd also like to add, since I jumped on board and have joined the initiative and stepped into the role, we've also met with the mental health team at SHOOT to address the mental health needs, to help the team there. So we are trying to build partnerships with Rogers Mental Health to see what mental health agencies we can also bring on site for a lot of our families. So we'd say we talked that out.
That's it.
Other questions?
Yeah, just, you know, this might be jumping the gun for April 11th, but Seth and I go back on the philanthropy side. And so will you guys be addressing the range of possibilities when you're talking about expansion, about getting potential philanthropic support in the community schools arena?
Yeah, so our board had a retreat in early February where we affirmed our continued hope to scale our community schools. And what we set at that time was a goal to define what scaling looks like and then to put this in as, you know, a key goal that we would fundraise for in next year's budget. So our hope is after April 11th, because we think that the site will be, we don't have anything there yet, but we think it will be helpful to have our availability as we go out and say, you know, we want to raise resources. And so our hope is after April 11th to then, you know, develop a plan quickly to move within September, unchoirled resources for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry. So kudos to everybody. We love hearing about this. Obviously, you hear that from the board. The three questions I had were the three points that you raised at the end, which were about money, about the proposed site, and about evaluation. So I will look forward to hearing about those.
That's what you often say.
Yeah, we did. It was like, how did she know I was going to ask all of those? Those were the three. And I'm really excited to hear about the focus on mental health. I think that is such, there's such a need. Just as a society, we don't take care of people's mental health in the way that, I think there's a lot of evidence that we need to be doing. And so, you know, middle school is such an important time for adolescent mental health, so that's fantastic to hear about. Thank you.
Okay, Candace?
You want to go?
You go.
Well, I don't have any questions because I think I've riddled you all with questions getting up to this point, so, but they all been asked and answered. But I do want to, I think it's interesting that we were just talking about capital and we talk a lot about capital in terms of buildings and all the supports we have, we need to make this school district run. And we don't talk as much about relationship capital and how valuable relate, building relationships, sense of belonging is to, to our school districts, to the way we work with one another and to our students and their successful outcomes. So I just see this as, you know, galvanizing our thoughts and our dialogues around the importance of that and maintaining that, you know, discussion as we go forward because it takes a long time to build, you know, it's a very intentional process. It takes time. It takes diligence and it takes a lot of action as well as, as discussion. So I thank all of you for being part of that journey so far and I think it's going to be exciting going forward.
We said that here, the two board members in particular, Jimmy and Kim, did never involve themselves in one of the plans to do for animal relationships. Build that plan.
Thank you. I just had a very specific question. The healthy kids food market sounds so amazing to me and I'm just wondering how it's funded and how it's run. And I know we can't, you know, take community schools to every school in the district, but when you find a gem like that, that you feel like, speaking to our staff, like you feel like, oh my God, that's something that maybe we'd want to do other places. How does it work?
So it is a program of the Greater Chicago Food Depository and we're actually their first suburban site, but it is a program intended to like really leverage the community school model to provide hunger support for families. So it's an onsite food bank. I don't want to say the number because I'm going to get it wrong, but it's like something in the thousands of pounds of food each week come in. It's at no cost to YOU, to District 65. It's built into what the Greater Chicago Food Depository resources and fundraises for. But the feedback that we get from them as our partner all the time is that having a full-time community school manager onsite makes it a partnership that they really want to sustain and potentially grow here because you can imagine when it's no one's job to be sitting there from 8:00 AM to 1:00 when the truck might come and then working with the custodians to unload the truck and then recruiting volunteers for the market and setting it up, it just, it doesn't run as well. So we see approximately 50 to 75 families come through every week in part because of the way it's coordinated, the way it's been embraced by the community. And I think it's definitely something moving forward with a potential new site that we would be strongly interested in replicating.
Just plug that, one of the 14,000 plus towns. The second is that this is a great example of shared mission because Greater Chicago Food Depository under their leader has been focused on how do they give more than food? And they've been very interested in how we can be a, you know, agent moving the needle on broader equity and opportunity issues. And so their excitement about this is that they're now coming food through a school in a way that's inviting families in and ultimately making education more successful. So I just, I think it's a great example of how, you know, this is ultimately bringing together visions through the school and the wonderful partnership.
That's amazing.
So let me finish my, tipping my hat to Erin and to Seth and to Leslie for the outstanding work at YOU. And what's really important about this work as we struggle together and move forward is building these lessons learned. So building the infrastructure, understanding what leadership is, trying to figure out the nuances of the dance between community partner and school district is really important, not only for the success of what is the YOU 65 partnership, but if we follow Pedro Magaro, he basically said, all schools should have community schools. We're not there yet, but we're learning so many lessons learned so that if we can capitalize and continue the relationships with YOU, there may be another community partner that we can partner with where we can draw the lessons learned from this experience and even grow to scale. I don't want to overpromise because we want to get SHOOT and school X right and moving, but I think there's also opportunities for us to think about community schools at some of our other sites with some of our other really fantastic community partners that can learn the lessons that we're learning. So kudos to you guys as well.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate you all coming.
That's what I think.
Okay, now we're on to the school year calendars, 2016, 17, and draft for 2017, 18. And that is Beatrice, Melissa, and Stacy?
I think so, that's right.
Yes. Okay, so before you tonight, there are two draft calendars. In terms of the committee, what our charge initially was to make sure that we, to the best of our ability, we aligned our school calendar with District 202's school calendar, which I think we've done successfully for both the 16, 17, as well as the 17, 18 school calendars. For the 16, 17 calendar, which actually was a draft that was approved by the board in the fall, we submitted a waiver to the state requesting school improvement days. And specifically, we were looking to use November the 8th of the 2016, 17 school year as a full day of school improvement, which would allow for a full day of professional learning for our teachers. This waiver has been submitted to the state and is going before the Illinois General Assembly tentatively on April the 5th. So until we get word from them, we are not certain whether or not we can actually take this day as a full day of school improvement or not. So that is one piece in just with regards to the 16, 17 calendar. In terms of the 17, 18 calendar, again, it is aligned with, very much with District 202. In terms of professional development for this calendar, the committee really used the half-day Wednesdays kind of as a placeholder, recognizing that the administration may look to implement different professional learning actions that may impact this calendar. And that type of work kind of falls outside the purview of the calendar committee, so we're waiting for that. And as you know, there are a lot of pieces that have to go into that before it can actually make its way into the draft calendar. So I think that's just one of the challenges of creating draft calendars so far in advance is that there may be some changes for the 17, 18 school year. In terms of the dates, for the start dates, I know that sometimes has come up as a question. So for the 16, 17 school year, our teachers are starting on August 22nd and our students are starting on August 24th. This is slightly different from 202. Their teachers are starting on August 18th and our, their students are starting on August 22nd. For the 17, 18 school year, we both have the same start dates for teachers, which would be August 24th and then students, August 28th, and we would be ending the same. Our winter and spring recesses are also aligned.
And I'll go up, go ahead and kind of pick up on the idea of the full professional development day, which would overlap with Election Day in the next school year. The memo that is attached, that is within the packet discusses the potential uses of that additional half-day. One of the benefits is that by essentially creating a full day of professional learning, we have an opportunity to really focus on one of several really significant professional development priorities that are outlined in our strategic plan. As we're looking at this coming year, we have several very important and significant topics that are well-connected to the strategic plan that we're working on, that our plans are to engage in significant professional learning. One is extended school climate work, implementation of a new literacy framework, diversity training, continued development of bilingual literacy model, as well as formative assessment work that could potentially be connected to student learning outcomes for educator evaluation. As we think about the possibilities of having a full professional learning day, it provides an opportunity for us to really connect to some of the information that was in the professional learning plan that was shared with the board in January. And that is to create extended professional learning opportunities that are aligned, collaborative, and create a significant period of time over the course of the year to really influence learning, find places to apply that learning, practice, and reflect. With the opportunity of having a full professional learning day, we're moving from 2.5 hours of learning to the possibility of six to seven hours of learning. That time would be used in a flexible fashion in the sense that some of it would absolutely be around new learning, but then there'd be opportunities for educator reflection, collaboration, and application to practice. One of the things that we learned with the professional learning plan that was presented in January is that district educators have very much appreciated professional learning opportunities where they can see the direct connection to their work. They have that opportunity to collaborate and then really think about how it can go back into the classroom and be applied. The half-days are a great opportunity for 2.5 hours. However, frequently that time is spent really navigating new learning and doesn't create as much time and opportunity for educators to be able to think, work together, and apply so that we can go back in. So it's an excellent opportunity for us to have some extended learning together and then for us to be able to take that full day and connect it with the half-days throughout the year to really try to design meaningful professional learning that can influence the district's progress towards the strategic plan goals and the strategic plan priorities.
Questions? Thank you.
Yep. Jennifer? The full day plan sounds terrific, that no question, and I think we all were in agreement that Election Day made sense as a full day of professional development. I still am, for me, lacking the rationale for the extra .5. I mean, I understand sort of your overarching comments and what you presented in January and a full plate of things that need PD, but I still don't, I don't get why we're not getting rid of one of the .5 days. Like for instance, the kids are going to come back and one week of school and you've got Martin Luther King and a half-day, right? So January 18th, like I know there's a cadence and a flow issue, but the full day, I get it, plans are great.
Two weeks later, another half-day.
I know, right? So the .5 is still problematic for me and I, and then I guess the other question is, are we doing this full day every, once every four years for presidential elections or are we going to have the same issue in April when we have the school board election and probably a couple of other things that'll be on the ballot in April? So.
I think the committee was thinking for the presidential elections.
Only, that there was a security issue? Okay.
And if I were to pick up your first question?
Sure.
Yeah. So we have seven district half-days that are distributed, you know, from October through to May.
Right.
One of the things, the way that we tend to divide those days right now is that the district has four days, the schools have three of the days. One of the things that we're, you know, so with those half-days this year, the math team has a series of everyday for math, everyday math for trainings of which they're really trying to connect the experiences so that educators have that opportunity to go back into the classroom around, you know, some of those sessions are also focused on literacy this year. And one of the things we did is we stepped back and we said, let's create literacy choice sessions and let's try to create three connected experiences that can really help educators, provide educators the opportunity to think more deeply about something. If we pull out a half-day, for instance, potentially in January, we begin to break up that pattern and that pattern, that distance between the district half-days is also, is already pretty significant. And then if we pull out a half-day, we create an even larger gap between the learning opportunities. And that has a negative impact on kind of the ultimate effectiveness of that professional development and educators' ability to go try things out and come back in some reasonable period of time and kind of learn more, adjust, and tune a practice, and then go back into classrooms. And so it's really about the kind of intervals of time and it already feels very stretched the way it is designed. The thought of pulling one out beyond that does create even greater gaps. And if we think about January, we're going December to that February window, there's a pretty big chunk of that where we don't get contact with educators.
I get that, but I also have ongoing questions about professional development and knowing that those half-days aren't the only mode of delivering professional development and there could be other modes that come into play between December and February. But I accept what you're saying and I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into planning the January information you presented to us.
I appreciate that. And I think our, our challenge is there are other modes right now, but we do have challenges in the amount of time that we are sending educators out of classrooms right now. And additionally, we need to, those half-days are our district opportunities to get educators scaled that we don't have.
Just because it's the way we do it now doesn't mean for, like for the upcoming years, we think about it slightly differently and we put into the consideration the burden on families of taking multiple days off and half-days off.
Understood.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to jump in though and say, I think that that is under consideration looking at years out, other ways of doing this that might eliminate the half-days at some point in the future, maybe. You know, it's not that anybody's thinking this is cast in stone, but it's sort of what next year might have to be.
Right. And next year, you'd be back at 3.5 days.
Yes.
Because there's no election.
No election.
So it's an anomaly year.
Thank you first on the calendar for all the work because I know we have thrown a lot of curveballs and trying to coordinate everybody's interests is really difficult. It's one of those things that when a parent sees the calendar, they might not understand all the thought that went into it. And so thank you for getting us to this point. I did just want to comment on the professional development day and I was really glad to hear some of what you shared in terms of the intention, in terms of the collaboration and the reflection and building toward practice. I think that's really critical. Jennifer took the words out of my mouth practically in terms... Jennifer took the words out of my mouth practically in terms of looking at what are the other methods that we can employ. I know we had a very superficial conversation in January about that. As we look to the future, and as you come back at some point with a comprehensive professional development approach, I will be extremely interested in how we bring all of those methods together. You know, coaching, reflection is a really important one, different types of on-demand reference. You know, even for the six-hour day, I would challenge us to think what can be done outside of that time. A lot of times, those sessions might be used in part to give information. What information could be given in advance so that you have even more time for reflection and collaboration? Because lifetime, as you know, is so precious. And it also isn't necessarily the most expensive approach, but it's one of the more expensive approaches. So I'm not looking for that comprehensive approach tonight, but know that I really will be looking for that as we go forward. And I think it doesn't just inform our professional development, I think it informs our instruction for students. Right now, we're focused on, you know, live events. There is, if we really thought about our instruction, we would be able to pull out all sorts of other methods that we do use. You know, teachers coach, and teachers guide kids through reflection, and teachers have them practice when they do homework or other types of assignments. So for me, it's, it is thinking about both of those elements. Anyway, I'll stop talking.
I would like to just jump in, though, and remind my fellow board members that one of the things that teachers don't get to do all that often is get together and learn together and benefit from the experience of each other and learn about new experiences from each other. And that I personally believe that there is no substitute for that. I mean, there are other things you can do. Certainly, you can give everybody a book and send them home and read it. I mean, that's another way of, you know, developing yourself professionally. You can take a college class. But working with your colleagues is a rare and very special opportunity, so I hope that we wouldn't lose that entirely.
And I'm not suggesting that, just to be clear. I'm just looking for a really balanced, multi-modal approach.
I have a really specific question. So, and maybe because my eyes aren't very good anymore. But in seventeen eighteen, are we moving beyond the core from a day off? I only see Rosh Hashanah noted as a non-attendance day.
It's a weekend in my phone.
It's on my phone.
It's a weekend.
It's a weekend.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that...
Good Friday isn't on there either. Is that because it's over?
It's because it's on spring.
It's on spring. Okay.
I love a weekend.
Thank you.
That was my only question.
And Beatrice, I have to thank you because I know with our closer collaboration with two oh two, this has been a really great year where we're not reacting to their calendar and they're not reacting to ours, but it was planned together. And that's a huge step forward.
It is.
So thanks so much for all that work.
Melissa as well.
Oh, Melissa. Yes. Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Is the high school, for sixteen seventeen, the high school is also ending, what's their last day of school?
It should be the same as ours, because they're starting, they're starting the same. Their students are starting on August twenty eighth in two thousand seventeen, and so they should be ending the same.
Oh, I'm sorry, sixteen seventeen.
Oh, in sixteen seventeen.
Yeah. Because they're starting earlier. So are they also ending earlier?
I may.
I believe.
I guess my question is, you know, right now, in sixteen seventeen, assuming that the waiver goes through for that full day of professional development, which, do we have any reason to believe that it wouldn't? So, then we would be ending on a Monday, which I feel is just not the ideal.
Nobody's going to be there.
No, yeah, I think we're going to see lots of absences on that day. So if there's any way that we can take one of these other non-attendance days, and in particular, I mean, looking at October, November, and the way that broken up, and I think I've, you know, offered it before, but, you know, taking Veterans Day as a non-attendance day, instead we can have some in-school instruction on what Veterans Day is. I mean, that, I think, would be a more valuable and educational use of that day and would certainly could be a more robust day of instruction versus a Monday in June when people probably won't come, frankly. So, I just, ending on a Monday. I feel very strongly that we should try not to do that.
And it looks like it ends on Monday in seventeen as well.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
Oh, you are correct, yes.
And for some reason, Veterans Day is not on the calendar.
And that, oh, that was my other question, yeah. Veterans Day is not on in seventeen eighteen.
So is that by choice?
It falls on a weekend.
Oh, really?
I think that happened more often.
That one I didn't look at.
Sorry. I did, okay. So then I guess it extends for seventeen eighteen then, too. If there is a way we can figure out not to have a Monday as a last day of school, when I think we can make the assumption that we will have large absences.
And the coinciding with Evanston and Skokie camps, because I owe that money, that they both start on Mondays. Have you checked on the summers?
I have not. They usually, I know they usually start after they get out of school, but I have not checked for their start dates.
So they would have to start a whole week later. They would be starting, in seventeen, they'd be starting the week of June seventeenth? Oh, okay.
This is the obvious, but...
They do partial weeks.
We've had a very lucky winter this year, folks. And those red lines in the June days are also our opportunity to have makeup days if we have a winter like that.
Oh, understood, understood, of course. But, you know, that being said, I still feel like planning for Monday.
Very fortunate. May I make just one more statement? I really appreciate the conversation on professional learning. And as a learning organization, the commitment to providing opportunities for our educators to really engage and learn in multiple modes from each other is really important. And so, we're constrained by the calendar, but we also have to make that commitment. And I hear that across the table, and we'll work on how we can do things in the next couple of years. And then, as Claudia suggests, in the years to come, we'll hope to have some very good ideas on how to maximize the learning in a continuous way so that, as Stacy suggests, it's really scaffolded over time.
Do we need a waiver, though, for Veterans Day, or do we have full license over going to school on that day? I believe Veterans Day needs a waiver. So we would have already had to request that.
Oh, so it's too late for that, okay. Yeah, I think that was...
I think we have.
I think that was discussed.
We'll have to double check when we get back to this.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? No. All right, we're on to the literacy framework.
Yay!
Yay!
Thank you for staying.
Oh, my God.
I know.
Come on up.
It's no longer necessary for Izvi to have approval of a holiday waiver for five legal holidays. Keen, like Lincoln, Pulaski, Columbus, and Veterans Day. Paul, there is no waiver required for Veterans Day. Izvi passed it in oh nine, the five holidays that do not require a waiver.
So it's our, it's the board governs, okay.
Okay. Two members just left. We're going to take two minutes for anyone else who needs to run out.
I get a bump.
The logging system change?
They shouldn't have closed the front side of four.
Thank you, Deon.
I don't think I need it.
Well, I think the question...
Exactly. The question is me, I'm like, the Jewish holiday, it's actually nice. Is everything really fair? Like, really early to use the money? Is that the reason? Because if you didn't, you know, it's not...
Small, like, the dolphin store.
So what kind of fun things are you guys?
I'm happy.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, it can't be a hundred percent. They wouldn't pay.
All right.
It's with excitement and appreciated support at the late hour that we get the opportunity to share a District sixty-five literacy framework for kindergarten through third grade. And truly, I have the honor of sharing it tonight, but this is a truly collaborative product that represents a lot of individuals' effort and voice as we really try to work together to create, we will be the best possible literacy framework to support the development of students and teachers in District sixty-five. I start pretty quickly with our kind of theory of action behind the literacy framework. As you all well know, the strategic plan really challenged us to take a look at teaching and learning, and specifically curriculum. And within that section, it called out for the development of frameworks, instructional frameworks around really key, critical, key areas of instruction, which literacy is clearly one. And it's my belief that this framework really helps to drive us towards improving the quality of teaching and learning, going from in what is strong practicing in the classroom to really strong and effective practice that can increase the outcomes for our students. So the theory of action behind our framework is that when District sixty-five defines a clear and consistent, research-based instructional practices for teachers and provides instructional material professional learning needed to deliver high-quality literacy instruction that meets the needs of all of our learners, then District sixty-five will prepare all students to excel regardless of students' race or income level. And there are a lot of very, very important ideas within that statement, but really key to that is that we need a clear and consistent framework across our classrooms, across our teachers, and across our schools. And then we also need to then do the work to support teachers in embracing that framework and really kind of seeing that framework actualized within our classrooms. And when we do that, we will see a change in the outcomes for our students that, you know, will really reflect well upon the district and the work that everybody does for our students. The purpose of our framework, you know, is multiple. One was to really define the components of high-quality literacy instruction. And I think we need to be clear here, the Common Core really demands that that is not just reading, writing, and language, that is also speaking and listening. And so when we look at the comprehensive framework, we really have worked hard out spaces that allow for that speaking and listening to happen. And that is, you know, important around literacy development and called to the surface by Common Core as well. Secondly, we need to understand how these components interact in the context of teaching and learning so that educators really can be successful with the ideas in the framework. In defining a foundation for the early literacy framework, we really are creating opportunities for educators to build increasingly rigorous and aligned practices. By creating a common framework, we're creating more opportunities for shared professional learning, shared collaboration. So we're really looking for ways to build increasingly rigorous and aligned practices. And we want to support the literacy development of all District sixty-five students to meet or exceed those college readiness standards, which we know are called for by Common Core, and raise a new level of expectation for ourselves and our students. Part of the purpose and the why, you know, the need for this framework is houched in what are, you know, really challenging outcomes for us as a district around reading performance over the last several years. And it's important to kind of hold on to these ideas as we think about the framework and then think about moving forward on the adoption and implementation of this framework. And the reality is, District sixty-five has had decreasing overall reading performance from 2012 to 2015. Additionally, we have an increasing percentage of students that are in the bottom full-time. We also have a disproportionate percentage of low-income students and students of college or not needing college and career readiness benchmarks. So as we entered this framework, we knew we needed to consider the strengths and the challenges of our own literacy practice, as well as kind of what our kind of results look like to build a framework that can best serve all of the students in our district. Additionally, when we take a look at the District sixty-five achievement and accountability, we realize that we have an intersection of declining reading results, but also declining kindergarten readiness measures, as we're called out by joint achievement and accountability. So this really frames the importance of the literacy framework and the importance of our upcoming work to make sure that we can change these outcomes for our students to work with teachers or district resources. Aligned with that, and kind of touching on this, part of our challenge is that the bar is higher. Common Core requires us to raise the bar for our students and reach to that and say, all kids need to be on that road for college and career readiness, so students have choice. And by preparing them well, we create opportunity and choice, and we have to start with that foundation in kindergarten through third grade. So the framework is intended to really address the kind of challenge and stretch within the Common Core. As Karen mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, and I mentioned at the very beginning, this literacy framework really is, has been a process and will continue as we move into adoption and implementation to be a process. The work began with a summer curriculum group last summer led by Jamitrudisitar. That group was really open and, you know, receiving enough that when I landed in this position in September, that they were more than willing to come back to the table and continue those conversations and engagement and have been an important partner throughout this process. The original draft that they worked on over the summer was shared with teachers in August. Throughout the fall, I met with groups of individuals, educators through the district, we had literacy coaches, literacy specialists, principals, teachers within kind of subgroups, and really did a couple of different things. One, to discuss what is, what do we see as being kind of the demands of the Common Core, and where do we see ourselves as being strong or in need of growth? And when we intersect the Common Core and the diversity of learners, the range and variety of learners, be it race, class, or achievement level within our districts, how do we see ourselves and our ability to meet those learners? From there, we then moved into, kind of with that lens of Common Core expectations, college readiness, and the fact that we are, embrace the diversity of our district, what feedback do we want to give on the draft of that framework? District sixty-five educators were incredibly open about their feedback on the framework, as well as the feedback on their own practice. And we've been able to really take those ideas and do multiple revisions on this framework to create something that we really believe can provide good guidance for teachers, solid professional learning, and opportunities for kids for us to change outcomes in literacy. We did pull a lot of those ideas back together with the support of Julia Emick, who is a leadership resident that joined us in January and has been extremely important in helping to move this work forward. Pulled a kind of a new version together in early February that we, again, shared out with a variety, kind of the same variety of stakeholders that have been involved in that conversation, and had further focused conversations in the areas of TWE and kindergarten to really make sure that we're understanding the complexities of the issues in some very specific spaces. It's that process that has landed us with the framework that you have in the packet tonight. The framework you have in the packet tonight contains the big ideas, it contains really important information, it gets into how we see timing distributed. With that in mind, frameworks are always a work in progress. Our job going forward is to now build out the tools and the supports that educators need to be able to do this work well. So this is the beginning of a collaboration and not the end of a collaboration, and it's a lot of work to get to the starting line, but there's a lot more to come in order to make sure that we really realize the full opportunity that's in the framework. Within that framework, we have a set of instructional beliefs. I think, you know, they're within the packet, so I'm not going to belabor them too far, but I do want to call out a couple of really specific things. This framework does call for explicit skills-based instruction. Sometimes when you talk about child literacy or workshop instruction, some people think, oh, is that, you know, free of explicit instruction? It absolutely... Absolutely, when we talk about workshops, we talk about explicit skills-based instruction that then releases into students opportunity to apply that learning in context of the work they're doing. So systematic instruction takes place for skills-based competencies. Additionally, learning is dynamic, and it's got to take place in flexible structures. Some of the learning for literacy is going to be whole class, some of it's going to be small groups, some of it's going to be one-to-one. When we think about the work within reading workshop, there are whole-class mini lessons focused in on the skills that students need to learn to be really solid readers. They have the opportunity to have differentiation in small group as well as one-to-one. Learning's social. Our literacy classrooms need to have a buzz to them. Our learners, and I think Making Meaning is a good example of this, our learners need that opportunity to dialogue, to share their discourse, to build their language, to hear language. So learning is social. Learning is also authentic. We've got to embed it in context for kids and help them understand the relevance of real-world purposes so that we're not doing this for the sake of doing it, we're doing it because we see why it's important and where it can take us. Learning promotes independence. Ultimately, we want to develop really strong independent readers and writers, so as they transition into high school and college, they've got the skills that they need to be able to navigate really tough and challenging situations. And so ultimately trying to build independence in our learners. And we've got to implement more work by assessments. We've got an assessment calendar, we have a lot of really great assessment practices that teachers practice in classrooms. We've got to better use that assessment data to really think about how we're matching what students need within our classrooms. There are also some underlying big ideas. We absolutely have and have to have a growth mindset for student center for ourselves as educators in District 65. There's a lot of hard work in this framework, and we're going to approach it with the idea that it's not just, you're given talent that makes you a great teacher. It's hard work, it's effort, it's learning, it's collaboration. And so this framework absolutely approaches the fact that students, we have to look at students with a growth mindset, you are not there yet. And with teachers, we need to work and continue to figure out the best way to do these things so that we're building capacity and getting better and better with students every day. Second, culturally relevant pedagogy and materials are important. Kids need to see themselves in our classroom. And so as we think about classroom libraries, as we think about re-allowed texts, as we think about the types of experiences the kids are having in classrooms, they need to experience academic success. They need to see things that are culturally relevant. So there are ways that we need these big ideas into literacy framework so that kids can have that increasing opportunity to be successful, to be engaged, to be relevant. Reading, writing, and language, when we look at the workshop, there are three workshops, but it's about literacy. So we break them apart because we want to make sure that we can see the importance of those things happening, but as we put them back together, it's really about integrated literacy framework. And so they're absolutely integrated. And then we look about ways to transfer into the content area learning. And so over time, we want to find ways to connect beyond the literacy belt club and into content areas both directions so that we are creating more of this seamless day for students, and they can understand the connection between literacy practices and their content area studies. There are three workshops within the framework. That language workshop is really focused on building students' understanding of how language works. It is going to be a speaking and listening portion, but it also is going to focus on kids' foundational skills, how do they begin to understand phonological awareness, the entry-level skills that kids need to have to understand the way language works, while also getting involved in really solid discourse that has switch vocabulary that might be associated with an interactive read aloud. So there's a language workshop portion. There's a reading workshop where we're really working on developing our readers to become strong comprehenders of text. And this gets focused very much on a mini lesson where then we release kids into trying that task out and moving more into independence. But our goal is to create active, thoughtful, and critical readers as they're going through. I want to be clear that when we're in reading workshop, a lot of times the focus, the text that we're focusing our mini lessons on will be that grade level or challenging or complex text that kids really need to break down and dissect. Then as kids move into the independent reading portion, frequently they are reading at their independent level, and students need that time in their independent level in order to become increasingly fluent readers. And it's the job of the teacher during that time to be conferring, to be pulling small groups, to be able to increase that instructional opportunity if they elevate the students' independent level. Writing workshop, we're building students' writing skills across multiple purposes and providing students an opportunity to develop grammar conventions and craft in authentic contexts. And so writing workshop is a place that the district has really invested lots of time and resources over the last six years, and there really is a strong strength in the district. In every conversation we walked into, teachers said and educators said, "You know what? Writing workshop is an anchor, and we really appreciate the work that's there." So we see that as being a pillar that really is a nice strength within the workshop today. As far as next steps, we really need to go working right now to define the literacy framework adoption and implementation plan. What you have in your hands is a complex, complete literacy plan that's going to require professional development and learning, and part of our work is to say, "Where are we going to start, and what's the professional learning plan that goes with that, and then what becomes the expectation for educators over time?" This literacy framework will be shared with educators on April 6th, and part of the message is this is where we're going over time. This is not what is going to happen day one when we come back in August. This is going to be a journey that we go on to build capacity, get things in place in classrooms, to really get the literacy portion of our day and K3 to be incredibly strong in supporting the range of learners that we have in the district. So adoption and implementation plan, long-term professional learning plan, resourcing, purchasing plan, short and then long-term, and then continuing to collaboratively develop tools and resources that are going to support educators throughout the district to be successful. And that's going to involve educators because they know as well as anybody what it is that they need ultimately to be successful with. And that's open to questions.
That was passed. Thank you. And now I'm sure there will be questions. I'll start on this side. Jennifer?
So it's less of a question and more of a couple of comments, Stacy, that this is the foreshadow of how you're going to approach other parts of the curriculum. It's A+. And the process, A+, I mean, the fact that it's authentic and you had real engagement and input into it, and the messaging that you just shared with us, I mean, this is a huge body of work, but this is a great place to start for literacy, and it gives me a lot of confidence in the next pieces of the curriculum that you'll dive into. So, good job.
Well, that is great. Thank you. And I do, I said quickly, because I said most of what I said quickly, but the fact that people in District 65 were as willing to step forward and engage with me coming in new, I also greatly appreciate it. So the thanks goes around.
I'll just echo that. I mean, this is really incredible work and incredible planning. I just wanted to especially point out the addition of the language workshops, I think. It is so phenomenal and so exciting, and I love seeing that in there. I don't really have any questions again. It's just, I think it's incredible. So thank you.
Well, getting the language workshop in there, which I know about, that's so exciting. It was like a Christmas present. And I hope you'll give that to the other, to fourth grade all the way through eighth really fast too, so they can have it.
One step at a time. That's warm.
Oh, good, okay.
So I'll add to the echo of accolades, and I think this process really epitomizes what we talked about as a culture of collaboration. So thank you, and thank all of you for being part of that, and all the teachers that are not here for being part of that, because it's clear the product and the deliverable is so much more rich. It's coherent, intentional, and the line of logic of what we are, how, the diversity of our learners, and I can see the alignment with what we're doing to address those needs. So I very much appreciate that. I do have a couple of little questions. So I've heard such amazing things about Making Meaning, just through the grapevine, through my own teachers. And I don't know if this is correct, but I recall somewhere saying 80%. Is that true? Am I remembering correctly?
80% is basically correct. We're at about 80% of classes in eighth grade.
So where aren't we? And when does that happen?
So we're not in Oakden, Dawes, excuse me, Oakden, Rhodes, and King. And as far as when that happens, it's really about the conversation that we're having right now about what the implementation plan is. Because when we put the materials in, we want to make sure that we're putting the right supports in place with the resources. And so we haven't made that decision yet.
There's just been fabulous responsiveness, at least in the folks who talked to me, someone who's sitting out there, about Making Meaning and other teachers. So just curious about that. And then I really appreciated the flexibility built into the model. So when I think of flexibility that the teachers will have and how they implement the workshops, how does that, and you spoke to it somewhere, but how does that look with our time block? So how much flexibility will there be on a given day for teachers to adjust the model to their instructional needs for the classroom? If you could just speak to that.
So the total minutes are less than the literacy minutes that are allocated in the instructional minutes memo currently in the district by about 40 minutes. That being said, there may be some adjustments in instructional minutes that happen as we move forward, but the idea was to create some flexibility for teachers to be able to say, "You know what? Today, this was short to the point, however, I feel like I need to go longer in interactive read-aloud, or I need more time in small groups," to create some flexibility for teachers to be able to respond to what they see with their kids in classrooms.
And then the last question, I know this isn't the first time we saw the kindergarten readiness data, but it struck me this time, and maybe it's looking at, again, when you break out skills by number, 0, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, that the shift in that drop of over 8% since 2012 is really a movement towards 0 and 1, students coming in with 0 or 1 skills versus a movement from 4, 5 to 3. And so I was really startled by that, I mean, because I hadn't digested to that point. And I wonder if that distribution or that change in the distribution affects the instructional frame or the way you look at instruction? Or is it, because it's a big movement that we've seen and not a movement from kids with four or five skills down to three skills. It's a big jump, or downward jump.
So I think some of the voices of kindergarten educators in the district really start with they expect when their kids walk in and click the door, a huge range of abilities. And the fact that we do the ISEL screeners right away at the beginning of the year does allow district educators to get a pretty quick idea of where kids are in those relative skills. The kindergarten educator said, "Hey, we need some of the time and opportunity to really begin to focus on how to get kids classroom-ready, school-ready, as well as beginning to worry about the literacy skills." So the way we kind of developed the framework with some of kind of building minutes over time, as well as lots of opportunities for differentiation, was designed to help teachers to think about where can I make sure I'm building in times to address the range of skills in my classroom. And so one of the nice things that Making Meaning does is it begins to say what we can get kids into, even at the kindergarten level, into independent reading and books and walking through books while I'm pulling small groups, be working with kids. Additionally, in the appendix of the framework with County of Breakfast Health, we really created, I think, a very important table back there that said, "If kids are here, if you see these behaviors, then these are the types of things that you can be doing." And so I think that level of explicit guidance really helps teachers to think about, if a kid is at 0 and 1 skills, where can I start? If a kid's at 4 or 5 skills, where can I start? And helps teachers to think about, just in more differentiated ways, how to get to the type of instruction more quickly that will benefit kids.
I mean, it does point again back to cradle to career and the importance of us doing this same, or us being the big us, not necessarily just us in this room, but as a community doing the same kind of great work at 0 to 5.
Can I piggyback on that question?
We really, we also, and this is to do to Stacy's very careful maneuvering to make sure we got a lot of different inputs, but the kindergarten teachers specifically met with us a couple of times, because the first time they met with us, they freaked out a little bit, which was really helpful, because we needed to think about a way to reframe the kindergarten experience so that the students really were growing, but also maintaining that inquiry and play-based literacy work that we really value at that level. So the notion of even thinking about minutes over the course of the year came from the teachers' voices, so we could really ensure that we're honoring where we need to go, but still maintaining that responsiveness across the kindergarten experience.
My question that corresponds to this is, I remember, and this may be really off-track of where you all are going, but 10 years ago in the district, when students came into kindergarten, and I think about this just because of the drop in some of the foundational skills that kids are coming in with, if they would do the ISEL, and then kids that didn't have those foundational skills would immediately be targeted for extra interventions. And it seems all of our efforts, we're now realizing need to become earlier, get kids' kindergarten ready when they arrive at school, and it seems to me that that seemed to be, I mean, we have had some drop-off in our achievement, and I'm wondering whether we should be looking at earlier interventions, starting as we used to from the very beginning of kindergarten.
So I think there are a couple of different things. We do do a lot of interviewing, but the primary focus, we do pick up early in kindergarten and in first grade. I think part of the framework is to be, will be to continue to look at what the right interventions are, but our first focus becomes, how do we support educators within the classroom? Do we provide the best possible education within the whole work setting? And so we do have the intervention section in there, and we're going to continue to think about what are the right interventions that complement the instruction, but how do we make sure, for instance, at K, that we are creating the resources and the support, that we're creating a rich classroom environment, and then doing, reaching, putting the initial line of interventions in place inside the classroom by doing the small groups and the one-to-one with kids. So there are always challenges about how to weave resources, but our first focus becomes, how do we create the best possible kindergarten experience or first-grade experience that we can, and how do we create those differentiation opportunities in the classroom?
Candace, do you have more questions?
No. Just your?
Just a couple of comments and one question. The first is, I'm sitting here looking at the people who are left, who have participated in this process, and the enthusiasm. You came before and spoke, you applauded enthusiastically after the presentation. I don't know that I've ever experienced that in five years while we've been here, where we're having a presentation on a new initiative, and there is clearly so much support for that initiative. And my sense is, I don't know this, but my sense is that you have ownership over this, that you're in it together, and I just think that bodes really, really well on top of everything that was so thoughtfully presented in the packet. So that makes me feel confident about not only the what, but sort of the how this is going to take shape in the district. So thank you very much for still being here at 10 o'clock at night, knowing that you have to get up tomorrow morning early and be with our children. And just thank you for your leadership on this. I mean, it's really clear that there has been strong leadership here. One last comment, just with the writers workshop. It's one piece that we have heard feedback from people that has been inconsistent, and I know that's sort of the foundation, because that workshop is already in place, and it's the grammar piece. And just wanting to make sure that there's consistent practice across the district in terms of grammar. I'll leave it at that. And the last thing is a question in terms of rollout. And I've never asked this, but it applies to a lot of initiatives, not just this one, but will apply to the situation. So let's say you spend the next two years really getting this rolled out and getting the teachers skilled up and buying into this and such. And then we have, so all the teachers in the district are ready, and they're implementing, and they're enthusiastic, and then we hire new teachers who haven't been exposed to this and aren't used to this approach, and it's more complicated, and what do we do with them to make sure that they're also equally prepared to maintain this over time?
That's a good question. I think the fact that we have this document created and we have a place to start with any teacher who comes into the district is important, because it starts with what we believe in, what's important, and what that's going to look like. And then we do have to focus on new teacher development, and there is a new teacher induction program. And then as we're also moving forward, and there should be opportunities for new teachers to be able to go in- for new teachers to be able to go into other classrooms and learn from other teachers' practice as they go. So, yes, we do need to think about what is that new teacher induction plan as we do all of these frameworks? That we can help bring teachers up to speed in a way that, you know, is the right learning curve for them. But then, I think we also need to think about how we can use classrooms within the district to partner with educators so that they can see the practice in place and use the mentors that we already do have within the district to help with that growth.
Great. And it sounds like you've already thought about that. I'm glad to hear that, and we'll trust that it's in good hands.
Huddy?
Well, actually, I sort of said everything I wanted to say about when I hit the language thing. But let me echo the grammar thing, because I know that you're doing a lot of work with grammar in the middle schools. And I also know that they need to come into the middle schools having some kind of foundation. So, I know you won't forget that.
Well, I'll expand upon that. I know it's still, you didn't think I'd let you go before I talked about grammar. I know it's embedded in the writer's workshop as it's always been, which means, in my mind, that you have twenty different lessons for grammar, and you don't have, like in math, a common lesson that then kids go out and try on their own. Is that still the case? Are you still having the teacher teach twenty different grammar lessons as kids go through the writing workshop?
No.
Is there, are you?
So, so the, I mean, that's, that's why we really wanted to make explicit this dynamic of having some whole-class instruction, as well as some small group work and then independent application. So, you're going to have the mini-lesson in which you might engage in a very shared activity around what it means to combine sentences so that they come together and really make sense. And everybody's doing that with the same little bit of text, and it's authentic, because the teacher has noticed that this is something the students really need to work on. So, everybody works on it together, and then there's an opportunity to apply it. And I might, as a teacher then, if I'm conferring independently, teach into what each student needs, but we're all referring back to that same frame of reference.
And is there any way to assess it at the end of the year? Because I know we have our reading, we have our math, and oftentimes, if you're not assessing things, because you have so much to do, those do fall by the wayside. Are we putting any assessment someplace to know that we're actually teaching the kids these skills?
By these skills, do you mean?
The grammar skills. I mean, so they're getting to middle school, and they've had this, it's built upon year after year, and they arrive all with the same body of knowledge. So, then the sixth-grade teachers can take off, and they know they have the same vocabulary, the same knowledge base.
Right. Well, we do have writing rubrics that are attached to the writing curriculum, and they do call out conventions as part of that. But it, I mean, the best way to assess students' writing is actually looking at what they're crafting. And it's just years of writing research, that if they, if they just get tested on those skills, isolated from the work that they're producing, then they're not, they're just not going to move in that vein as writers. So, it's really important to think about being explicit with mechanical instruction, but making it as authentic as possible as they're producing language.
I agree with that, but I just, not to be cynical about it, but we have had students in a time even arrive in the high school with absolutely, very few grammar skills, the conventions. Even if they've learned to express themselves, they just don't have the mechanics to do it effectively in those honors, mixed honors humanities classes that require a fairly high level of writing. And so, I just worry that unless we're explicit about it, that some, you know, the writing may be authentic, but it may, they might just not have some of the conventions down.
I, for example, the Common Course says that the eighth-grade students should know the difference between an active and a passive sentence. Yet, I think unless you do a lot of work, you're not going to be able to recognize that. And that does require explicit instruction. And it is a difference between being a good writer and not such a good writer. If you write everything passively, then you're not, you know.
So, so I think, you know, just to kind of, so one, we can take it as a note, you know, and we do have that on our mind. There are the grammar appendices that do call out the grammar skills by grade. We do have the writing rubrics that call out conventions. We can definitely think about, you know, and work with teachers to think about within that writing workshop space, where do I intentionally pay attention to when I'm teaching and assessing those skills? And I think the little school TLC work, where they've been developing some, as designed grammar lesson plans that they can pick up and use, and therefore then take a look at students' independent parents applying those skills, you know, does move forward and kind of area.
Does the park have any grammar and usage section to it that we could look at over the years? So, we could track any of this?
I would, before, you know, I have to, I don't want to answer that outright. I need to take a go. My mind, my answer is I don't believe so, but I need to take a look.
Because Explore used to be one benchmark.
Right, right. ACT does explicitly, but.
Yeah.
Can I ask?
Yeah, I have one more question.
No, 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 go.
Okay, the other, the other question I had is, when we call out sort of the issues that we're addressing in the new literacy framework, and I, and there's certainly the overall performance drop, the increasing percentage in the lowest quartile, and the disproportionate low income in students of color. And these are certainly the most urgent issues that we face. But another issue that we've seen over the last four years is the top quartile has had an over eleven percent drop in kids making their expected growth. So, what in the, what in your plan addresses that explicitly?
So, you know, I think, again, it's not, so I think it is the overarching model of, one, the intersection of reading, writing, and language. Because the development of, you know, insertion of language, you know, creates opportunities for deepening vocabulary experiences, deepening connection content areas, creating opportunities for us to differentiate in that lane. Secondly, is the instructional delivery. There are focused, there are focused whole-class lessons, but then we have opportunities to be meeting kids in small groups and one-on-one. And those small groups, when we talk about, you know, kids in third grade, you know, creating the differentiated table in the back says, hey, until kids are a certain level, let's do guided reading. But then, once they've hit that certain level, or they've tested out of the ISELE skills, let's move on quickly. And let's go on to the next appropriate instructional strategy that's going to help them as a reader. So, it's the model of whole class to small group to individual. And it's this, it's the focus on, let's take a look at where the learner is in their trajectory to make the instructional decisions, as opposed to where we are in an instructional, in a regular calendar. And so, and it's going to be providing teachers with the supports to be able to say, all right, I have a good decision-making tool. What's the best thing for me doing with this group of learners? Whether they're the high-end, or whether they're, you know, the striving learners that are working at a high level.
Thanks, Candice.
So, this is so great, I don't know how I could think of anything else to add to it, but I thought of something. And that is, I was thinking back on the strategic plan and, you know, our work around parents as partners and caregivers as partners. And might there be a component of the instructional framework that looks at the shared responsibility between family, home, and school, and around, you know, literacy instruction? And what, how can we improve that partnership to support kids both in and out of school in their literacy development? So, it's just a, it's a thought, certainly as you move forward. As, as we're explicit with this, I think it also behooves us to be more explicit with, with our parents and our partners around what are our expectations for one another and how we support our kids? And I think the more explicit we can be, the more shared responsibility we can take in that.
So, I think an opportunity we have there, you know, and so, I've got me thinking about this with the family and community engagement question that John asked last board meetings. Can I think, we start with kind of, how do we engage families and community in helping them understand the literacy practices and what we're doing and what our beliefs are? And then, we can enter into that conversation about how we partner.
Great, thank you.
So, this might be the, can we bring in something from FYI into this conversation?
Yeah.
Right, so this, maybe this is the elephant in the room. And you, you just presented at fifty thousand feet. But FYI, we've got the update on innovations for learning. And my quest, I have many questions about that, but the biggest question is sort of, I assume that that's, you know, you talked about this being a framework, and you've got lots of decisions ahead in terms of the tools and the programs and the methods that you'll be using. So, that's one tiny slice, like that's a piloted, piloted tool. But I was having trouble understanding sort of where and how it fit in. And so, is it something that's an analog, and it's just a parallel track? Or is it embedded in this, and can you explain how?
Sure.
I think the work that, Stacy and I talked about this briefly today, the work that we need to do together is to, visiting the classrooms at King, continuing to talk with the teachers there, really focus on the aspects of the curriculum, which is pretty narrow that IFL is attempting to address, the Teacher May program is attempting to address, which is really around phonics influencing instruction, and then bridging that really quickly into independent reading. And so, I think there are aspects of IFL that are going to be a very, a really nice bridge. And there's going to be aspects of the curriculum as we think about minutes, as we think about instructional strategies, that will really take a careful look at which aspects of the framework does IFL touch upon? Does that tool help teachers to address? That would be different than another school that doesn't have Teacher May, will need another tool to address those aspects of the framework, specifically fluency and phonics.
Which would sit to a language workshop.
Yeah, so it'd be a portion of the language workshop.
Well, if we're going there, I'm going to make a comment too. So, I just want to say kudos to the results to date for IFL. I think that, that, and thanks to the King Arts team for embracing it. I mean, the early results of having, you know, a ten percent growth for kids on average is wonderful. I had the pleasure, I think, with Claudia to do a site visit and seeing the level of engagement and excitement of the kids and the teachers around this tool. Shows that, you know, innovation, and you're really look at how tools can support instruction, which I think was exhibited the way it's been implemented, and that has been flexibly implemented, is, is really a great possibility. You know, obviously, we still have more to learn from that. So, I want to thank John for, for taking us in that direction, and then, and the King Arts team for embracing that as we've moved through the year.
So, Candice, I'm going to push back, or I'm going to ask another question on, on the actual, so I'm assuming you're talking about this table, right, as the results?
Well, I was looking at the.
The ten, right.
There was an average in the text, yeah.
So, I had trouble reading this, like, from an intellectual validity of looking at data properly. And so, maybe I'm not looking at it right, and you can help me out. But this is, this is not a longitudinal look. This is looking at two distinct classes, right, of kids who could have completely different makeups. And so, to, to look at it this way, for me, I would want to see it like as a more than two-year comparison if you're looking for a trend, an average trend. Or I'd want to look at it as longitudinal, which you can't do right now, because you don't have enough time. So, I, I, I think, I think there's certainly promise here. But I, and I have, you know, it's great that you've seen it. I think that's one of the things that we had asked for, and I'm glad two board members have seen the program. But I, this didn't cut it for me yet in terms of solid, you know, data.
Yeah.
It's a year.
Absolutely not. I think these are, Jennifer, these are early results.
Right.
We implemented in October. And so, the attempt here was to see, is there any quantifiable data or information that would support the teacher, the teacher feedback that we're getting? And the teacher anecdotal feedback is, we're getting into independent centers faster earlier in the year, which is gaining us time. The students are really enjoying it, are taking to it. We can use this tool in a number of different ways, really flexibly, not quite exactly how it was kind of taught, although we do have a teacher who's implementing it very close to the model that was introduced. And so, it was an attempt to see, just so far, I mean, I think if we go back to our board report from last year, we talked about really giving this two years.
Exactly.
To really see a cohort of kindergarteners progress through. And if I'm, if I were guessing, I think we're going to find that with our teachers in D sixty-five and with our students, we're going to see a different trajectory than what IFL and Teacher May typically sees in other districts. I think we're going to, we're going to wean this tool earlier and meet other tools. And I think it's very similar to the work, one of the aspects of the literacy framework that really resonates is that we see different types of small group instruction as students progress in levels. We see different tools in this aspect as well from IFL. So, these are early results.
Right. And just to clear, to confirm what you're saying, you are going to be tracking kids longitudinally over those two years? And so, at the end of two years, we'd be able to see that growth from looking at DRA or ISELE, like what kind of growth they have?
Yeah, we're, we're set up to do that. And we've also, working with Peter in Research Accountability and Data, have identified two comparison schools that are in our district and closest to size and demographics at King that we can compare to and learn lessons from.
Indeed, IFL is a tool. And the interesting piece is that we have, I agree with you, it's a snapshot here, and we've got to be very careful about rushing to conclusions. The other way to say this is what Stacy's really presenting and what John is agreeing to, which is that there are other tools as well. So, let's, let's at least use this experience to say, what do we learn? And then, as we evaluate other tools, as we evaluate other tools that can be used in the classroom that fit the framework, we can, we can pass some full judgment on that.
And that's, I mean, that's a question I have, whether it's IFL or ST Math or anything that we piloted. I made that comment before, that there'd be good protocols for testing something and good assessments and, you know, evaluation, using that term loosely, when you start, right, so that we know what you're measuring when you're starting to pilot something? Because pilot, you know, doing pilots is absolutely what we, we need to experiment and try new things out. That's, I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't, but we should go in with a good plan.
And that's what's exciting full circle to the framework, the framework, the curriculum maps. Yogi Berra, if you don't know where you're going, you're not going to get there. So, we have directionality, we have intentionality, we have a theory of action based on expertise that really talks about what instruction should look like. And then, we can actually start to test out the multiple tools, including IFL, and where it fits and where it doesn't.
So, can I ask two other questions on IFL before we close that part out? Are you, I took a look at their, you know, one of the issues that came up a year ago was the financial status of the organization. And asked, we asked, I think I asked, you know, will this organization be around? Is it sustainable? I looked at the nine ninety tax form, again, that they submitted in September, and it's about the same, about a two million dollar negative fund balance. So, again, I'm going to ask, is the sustainability of this organization in question at all? And then, my second question is more to the board about, does anyone else have questions about Tutor Mate? And, you know, if you're going to use the Evans and firefighters, is there a way to get them there in person versus over the screen? So, those are, those are the two final questions I had on IFL.
On the, on the sustainability, the nine ninety will speak for itself. So, it depends a bit on whether or not IFL can get more contracts or whatever over time. We're not bound to buy their product over time, so, you know, and again, it's a, so, I mean, that's how I'd answer it. And then, on the, on the Tutor Mate, the enthusiasm of Chief Kleber is around actually, I mean, using the, using the technology, and then, towards the end of the experience, bringing, bringing the firefighters over. We haven't totally negotiated whether it would be a fire with, with the truck as well, if it would be fun. But I actually think there's a lot of enthusiasm, I hear your question, but the enthusiasm was around trying to link through the technology.
I will say though, I just participated, or we participated, a few of us participated, you were there too, the, the Washington All Read Day, and, you know, firefighter members of the team were there. And it was way more exciting for kids to get to read with one of them than it was for one of us. You know, this is a way of asynchronously, you know, getting out of the time and place kind of constraints and doing something that certainly shouldn't preclude individuals coming into the classroom, right? Like, everybody, you know, I've never had a teacher turn me down coming into the classroom on a regular basis and doing that as well. But it's a, it's another, it's another mode, you know, to your point about multimodals earlier.
I would just add on this topic, I, I didn't interpret the report as conclusive. I took it as a leading indicator. And I know that I have pushed for leading indicators, so I welcome seeing what is an indication of what the results could be, but that we haven't reached any conclusion.
Any other comments, questions?
I did have a question about the Tutor, TutorMate though. Which is that part of the report said that we were going to have to get computers?
I feel like I should say that too then.
Computers into the classroom to support?
Yes.
Just one?
Just one.
Okay. One for each classroom?
Correct. Each first grade classroom.
Do we already own these computers? We have to buy them?
No, IFL is giving us the computers.
Okay. It's nice.
Move those off.
Okay. All right. We still have a couple.
Okay, so we have a couple FYIs, but let's finish up our upcoming work and then jump to the, and thank you guys. This has been a great.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, the Finance Committee, Candace?
Yes.
Anything we should be thinking about? This is April 11.
Well, based on our previous discussion, I think we have some work to do.
Yeah. Okay, Policy Committee, Suni?
I'm April 18.
Regular board meeting, as we all know, it's the Student Achievement Report on Black Student Achievement that you talked about earlier, the Accredited Career.
The work continues, and the working groups are doing a lot of outstanding work, and we're redesigning kindergarten registration. So, there are pieces of the puzzle that are coming out that are being pushed by Credit Career.
Yes, indeed. We've gone over the Community Schools Initiative, early Head Start, early Childhood.
Yeah, so the, I think I may have mentioned this earlier, and this gets to Candace's question about parent engagement, but Joyce and Katrina, on the Head Start side, are going to be meeting with researchers from the University of Chicago about the potential of Evanston being a site in their upcoming research around parent engagement in math. Basically, the Head Start kids would get tablets, and they would be getting, and the parents would be getting text messages to be using them at home. The U of C Behavior Innovations and Parent Engagement is the program. And they have already done this with reading and tablets, and they showed a full standard deviation impact, which is, I mean, this is randomized research in the real deal, and this is basically using the same method, but with math instead of reading. So, that conversation is happening April 19th, I think. I think there, I mean, there's no cost to the district for doing this. I think there's a question on Katrina and Joyce's side about, you know, additional paperwork or time. But it's a pretty exciting opportunity to have research that we would never be able to afford ourselves to be part of, and really has a strong parent engagement component. So, to be continued.
Can I just note too, you know, as that conversation goes forward, we've been working pretty hard with the tech side to keep track of every time we bring in a new kind of purchase of equipment, we're thinking about the impact on that tech team. So, understanding the number of units, the type of units, and whether we have the opportunity to purchase those units, or whether they're purchased for us, because that impacts our ability to support those units.
For this project?
Yeah.
They bring, they provide them.
And would they then maintain or do we?
Yep, all the servicing.
Okay.
Because it's part of, exactly.
Okay.
And then, they monitor time usage, like, on them.
Yeah, and that's just my.
It's, well, I think we'll learn more on the 19th about when the lift is there, but.
On the reading side, it sounds like they support the technology entirely.
And so, it's just, if it, if that changes.
They did the same project with reading. It's all preloaded. They do the maintenance, right? So, if somebody has something go wrong with theirs, it's on the U of C side.
And that's important, and if it is anything different than that, just letting us know so we can plan appropriately.
Will you be part of that meeting?
If, yes, let me know when and.
Yes.
It's the 19th.
Send it to, and I can join.
Just, so I recognize, Jennifer, thank you for connecting us. And we made the connection, it was seamless, and within, you know, several hours, we booked the appointments, basically. So, many thanks.
Great. The Joint Committee, D65 202 Committee next meeting is May 5th, and we will have ongoing discussions about consolidation and the joint reading goal. Probably more than that, but, so I can think of. Park Advisory Board?
T V D.
Okay. Informal of FYIs, the FOIA, I'm going to assume, we don't have any questions on. The RTI Framework and Guidance, anyone have anything on that? I actually had a thought on that. You went through your logic about keeping it the 25th for the 40th for intervention. I think we have to think about that, because if the high school really is using the 40th for their intervention and their cutoff, then if, we're really out of alignment there in terms of what we define as needing that extra push. So, I just, I just thought I'd throw it out there. I know it's money, I know, I know, it's just, you know, it's just, we define it one way, they define it another way, and we're getting into problems with that already. And so, it seems like we need to at least think about the fact that we.
But I don't want to lose, I hear you. But I don't want to lose track of the kids in the 20th percentile below.
No, I agree with that.
In some ways, I'm not criticizing the high school here, but you can, you can, you can pay attention to the 40th percentile below and miss out kids who are really, really struggling.
I know, but if, on the flip side of it, if they are considering these kids not able to get into these classes without support that we want them in, then we might be missing the 25th, 40th that we could be getting into those classes.
We're agreeing. But I also worry about bubble strategy, again, I'm not talking about the high school, but you can concentrate on the 38th percentile, flip them over to the 42nd, and then feel good. And I won't feel good about.
No, I don't think that would be, yeah.
My question on all these is, when do we discuss them? And I know it's not now.
Some may, well, I think that IFL, we have, I think we feel pretty satisfied with. I think FOIA we're okay with, the ESL, we should have a conversation. I don't, I mean, the system of support and the cutoff, I think that's, I don't know where we were, that was just a thought I had when I read.
And is ESL expansion going to come up in finance on the 11th? Like, how is that, like, there's a cost implication there, or a structure? What's, what's the plan?
It's integrated into the budgets. It's all in. It would be, well, no, it would be, because it would, you know, whatever additional incremental costs will be integrated into budget development.
It's moderate.
Yeah, I think, do we need to talk about the financial implications? I think the costs that are outlined are very, are very minor, and most of them would be covered by our existing grant, Title III bilingual grant. The most significant increase is in teaching positions, which has nothing to do, well, with one exception, I'm sorry, has little to do with where the program is provided. We need to be providing teachers to provide ESL services. The increase in the number of students is, as I pointed out in the memo, we have 13 students at Dawes whose families have been given the choice of go to your neighborhood school, or get these important services that we think your child needs and is legally entitled to. And 13 parents have waived their rights to those services and option of staying at the school. We would anticipate that those, that many of those families will now say, yes, please. We would like to accept the bilingual support services that you can provide. So, as this expands across the district and we grow into more schools, we are going to have more students receiving services, which will increase our needs for staffing, unless we take another approach to staffing, which we're discussing.
I, I do want a question related to that, because there are a number of students at Walker today, I'm sorry, there are a number of students at Walker today who are being served, who are in the Dawes attendance area.
Correct.
I, you know, I don't know, it will be their choice, right? I assume whether they, they might decide to move their kids back to Dawes or not, some might want to play out. Do you have, do you know the number that that potential audience that could shift if they so chose? I know, obviously, we wouldn't, you know, require them to, but I'm just curious as to how large that, that group is.
Yes, I, I do have that number. I saw the memo, I could pull it for you if you needed to know after the meeting. We do have that number, and the number of, we looked at several different options. One option was moving all of the children currently at Walker from the Oakden and Dawes attendance areas. That would be the largest group. That's a very significant group of children. The other option was, what we decided to go with, was offering families in the Dawes attendance area to transfer to Dawes if they would like, which might make sense if they have a young child, or if they have another kindergartner coming up. The other option was to not offer transfer and just begin with the kindergarten children coming up. So, what we are recommending, or moving forward with, is to offer to families who are at Walker currently, who live in the Dawes attendance area, if you would like to transfer, you may. And we have, we know how many children that is, we have a guess about how many families might accept. And that's why we're saying, based on those numbers, we think it's going to be about 30 to 35 children. And so, that's why we're, we've put in a request for two positions.
Okay.
Sure.
Any other questions on that? And to answer your question, Jennifer, I think if any of these are lingering, we should bring them back, but when we see it at finance, I think we can revisit it if we need to. And the IFL, then the math update, you did note there were a couple lingering questions that you would get back on. Is that at the end of?
The, in regards to the math memo?
The math update.
So, the math update, we answered the vast majority of, I think we answered just about, I think there, we referenced every question we'd been asked. We have about four at the bottom that we didn't have answers to yet, but we addressed that there. So, that, that should be a pretty comprehensive response to the questions that were raised, either through email or conversation in the last meeting. If there's something that we did miss, feel free to reach out. I know there was an additional email just this week, and I think we tried to reply to that directly through the email.
Okay, all right. So, if there are any additional questions, we can reach out. Any other, okay, now we're on to informal presentations from the public.
Stephanie Kimmel, I am a Walker parent, and I wanted first to say how excited I was to read the literacy framework. Obviously, a lot of hard work went into this, and I was particularly pleased to see the reading specialists and our educators involved in creating this plan. I wanted to just comment on the IFL program. It just feels like a little bit of a thorn in my side, and I want to address it again. I was a little surprised to see that kind of added into this, the irony of it being added in with this agenda. And just really wanted to say, let's take a look at how that really fits into the guiding principles that you just developed. You know, is there a common language and consistent instructional practice across classrooms and grades using this tool? Does it promote a growth mindset? How is it culturally relevant? These are questions that I don't think, you know, we've at all answered. Is, how is it integrated into the reading, writing, language workshops? That's what we talked about in the presentation as being important. How does it transfer into and support content area learning? It sounds to me very isolated. I'm not an educator, but this is what we've been told. How is it authentic? And in terms of the next steps for the framework plan, I absolutely agree that investing in professional development and learning time to make sure this moves forward, developing a purchasing plan collaboratively with our educators in order to select tools and resources that will be appropriate to move our kids forward, that wasn't done in this case. I, I just think it still begs the question, like, why continue with a tool that is not going to fit into the overall strategy for our district? The volunteer component, having volunteers read over a computer to our students when they're less than a mile away seems like almost ridiculous to me. I think it certainly does kind of address the concerns that some of us raised about strangers reading to our children. However, we live in a volunteer-rich community. We have an excellent, or as I understand it, widely recognized excellent volunteer fluency program in our district that we're not really investing in. Let's do those things first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sophie Dugner. I'm a District 65 parent, also the coordinator of the Reading Specialist Program at National Lewis. And I'm here to talk about IFL too. In light of what was a really remarkable, the framework for literacy for K3 is remarkable in a lot of ways. The collaboration with reading specialists and teachers is great. The way it looks at all the different aspects of literacy is impressive and very research-based and very consistent with what we know to be good practice. So, given that, I really wonder if IFL is the best we can offer our most struggling readers. Research tells us that students need to apply what they learn about phonics into real tests. But what I understand about IFL guidelines is that kids are not put into real books until they reach a certain level of expertise. And I do not think that's good practice. The other thing that is not included in IFL is time for guided reading. There is time for small. There is time for small group instruction on phonics, but there isn't time for guided reading, which is when kids get together and actually read tests and talk about them and comprehend them. And I think that's, I, given that there's this wonderful literacy framework that everybody seems to approve of, I do wonder about that. And I want to echo what Stephanie said, which is, how do those two things jive? I would like to say something about the research on IFL, both the existing research, but also the district research, which is that it's not peer-reviewed and not especially compelling. When I looked at very thoroughly, I did a close reading of the research on IFL, that results are inconsistent. They, in many cases, the control group outperformed the treatment group. And as, as, who said it earlier? Well, you said it, Jennifer. District 65's research is looking at two different cohorts of students, and I don't think we can claim success based on that. And I understand that you understand that, but if you're going to be publicizing this to families, I think you need to think about that language. And the last thing I want to talk about is TutorMate. We all love firemen, but they are not trained literacy professionals. I'm sure that they will be trained, but I would like you to think about, what does that training look like? They're working remotely with a student, looking at the same page. What, how do we know, what are they going to say to kids when kids get to a word they don't know? What does that training look like? Who's supervising it? Who chooses the materials for them? One of the things in the research said that results were inconsistent with TutorMate, because sometimes the tutors couldn't come. So, what happens when that happens? What if the firemen are out on a run? That's all very glamorous and good, but these are our most struggling readers. We could just not going to have half hour of instruction? Do we know what we're going to do with them when they come back to class? And what are the expert teachers, the teachers in the building, doing during the time that kids are out being tutored? The struggling readers who need the trained teachers. Why are we sending our most struggling readers to be tutored by firemen? So, I think that about wraps it up, but I would, you may or may not know the research of Dick Allington, Richard Allington, but he believes very strongly that our struggling readers are often ripped off, gypped, because they are put with people that are well-trained to reach their, to meet their needs. So, thanks.
I just want to ask a question, Stacy, based on the comments. My take is, you know, we had a pilot in place, and we have lots of practices in place regarding literacy in the district. And today, for the first time, a new framework has been presented. And my expectation is that there would be an assessment of all of our current practices, IFL being one of dozens, that would be reviewed to see how they fit into that framework. Is that a fair assumption?
That is a fair assumption.
Okay.
Okay. If there is no more business before the board, I find this meeting adjourned. Good night.